Welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
Council members.
Costin.
Here.
Cummings. Coming.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Stanky.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item four is business. Before we get into citizens' input, Mr. City Manager, I believe you have something you want to discuss first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the city is a very large organization, and I don't know everything that goes on day to day. And sometimes I hear of little bits and pieces of good progress and things that deserve recognition. And I'd like to just take about five minutes this morning to have some staff from Development Services and Mark Folks from Tenzinga, who's been working on our Anagov permitting processing, to just explain to you a recent change that took not only understanding the current environment of permitting, foresight, and then implementation. And it was interdepartmental and also involved state agencies. And as a result of it, I think you'll find that what happened last Friday when the permit counter was closed is nothing short of remarkable. You know, in light of everything that Development Services has faced over the past year, this story that you're about to hear is just something that needs recognition. So I'd like to just spend five minutes to allow Mark and anybody that was involved in this to come forward and just explain what they identified and how they implemented it and what the result was.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of council. And first of all, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your involvement with this in the meeting that you went to with the state and the Ian recovery meeting and thanking, you know, the State Emergency Management Director as well as the Governor's Office for doing this. But what we were able to do was, and to kind of give a background on this, we have to, the permitting staff has to review what's called a notice of commencement, which is basically a lien agreement between the contractors and the owners of the property. And so by statute, our permitting division is required to completely verify all the information on that permit or on that notice of commencement by statute. And that is a very timely process. I mean, it creates several layers, four to five steps that you have to do to verify that, and it's a very timely process. And with the volume of permits that have been issued because of both Hurricane Ian and the growth that the city is experiencing, it has been a undertaking and quite a backlog, especially with the push-button permits for the roofs and the other things that we've been trying to get permits out on. And we had quite a backlog of those, around thirty-two to thirty-five hundred at any given time, a backlog, about six weeks, trying to get those completed. And so we, John Nocleario with the City Attorney's Office and myself, went to the Department of Emergency Management and asked them for an executive order to exempt the requirement to do the full verification on those notice of commencements. And so we were able to get that through the Governor's Office and the Department of Emergency Management. We were able to get that executive order in place, which allows the permitting staff just to verify that a notice of commencement is attached to the permit, which is also required by law, which is a much shorter process. And I also want to thank Chief Lamb and his staff at the Fire Department for helping enter, kind of, on our behalf, to get the emergency manager to, I guess, get this executive order going through the process. And so, but John was instrumental in working on that, and I really appreciate his help. But also Bogdan Sernik and the entire staff of permitting services, they cleared all of that backlog last week, within a week. Four days of having that executive order in our hands, they literally cleared a six-week backlog of looking at those permits and got roofing permits out. The final inspections can now be done. The permits can be closed out on a lot of these, and it's just really amazing what the permitting staff has done over the last few months with the hurricane and with the, some of the issues that we've had with the configuration with Anagov that we're working through. And the permitting staff deserves a real huge amount of credit for what they have done and what the work that they have done in getting these permits out. I mean, it's an amazing number of permits, forty thousand in less than six months. They actually processed more permits in the first six months this year than they did all of last year. And so it's, I think that they need to be recognized for that. I think they're up here in these first two rows, and I don't know if Bogdan wants to speak, but Bogdan and his entire staff are right here in these two rows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bogdan, have anything you want to?
Bogdan, do you want to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. First of all, it's all about people. I recognize this primarily. This group of individuals that I am leading is an incredible group of people. We have been through avalanche of work lately, and we have been able to sustain all of that and work through. And because of the people that are here, who are so much committed and have so much interest in working for the city and proud to be working for the city, I'm only able to stand here and take this recognition from you, Mr. Mayor, from Mr. City Manager, Mark, and whatnot. So my goal here is, again, to lead the group of people that are working hard every day and giving the best that they can. And I am proud to work for the city, and I'm also proud to lead this group of people. So round of applause for Permitting Services Division that had been doing an outstanding job for the past couple of months, literally several months, for an incredible job they have done, each and everyone individually. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you know, like was mentioned, it's all about people, but it's about teamwork. And, you know, we all wear different hats. You know, just on this, on this particular topic, you know, I know Chief Lamb had reached out to me and told me about what the City Attorney's Office was trying to get changed so we could help you guys do your jobs and make that process move faster. So, you know, I took it upon myself, I reached out to the Director of FDEM and, you know, let him know how much of a priority that that was, not only for our city, but for every city, because this affects everyone. So I just wanted to thank each and every one of you for your hard work. You know, I know up here on this dais in the City Manager's Office, you know, we get emails constantly recently because permits may be taken a little longer than normal. A lot of the times, when you go and look at that, it's not our fault. A lot of times, it's their fault because either something failed, they didn't resubmit something. So, you know, I just want to say thank you to each one of you for all your hard work. I know that you're dedicated. I know you're doing a great job. I know, you know, what we're asking you to do today is twice as much work than you did last year. So thank you for all your efforts and all your hard work, and together, working as a team, we'll get through it and we'll be better, a better organization as a result of it. So thanks. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I just wanted to congratulate all of them and show them some recognition, you know, in light of everything that they've faced, they can continue to be focused on being the best. And this took identifying a solution, working with the legal office, your office, the Fire Department to get emergency management involved. And then, once we were able to get the executive order, they had to implement it, and they did that in one day and released that entire batch of permits. So just a phenomenal job. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd also like to publicly thank, you know, the Director, FDEM, Kevin Gunther. He does an outstanding job, and I've been in a few meetings with him here recently. And he's about getting it done. He's about getting the red tape out of the way so we can do our jobs. I want to thank him and his office and his staff for recognizing this as an issue and coming up with a solution to help us do our jobs easier. So thank you to the Director as well.
In closing on this item, we're not done here. Mark and John, I believe, are actually crafting draft legislation to present to our local delegation to be considered next year before our elected representatives at the state to make a permanent change. This way, this is something that is permanent in our laws as opposed to an executive order due to an emergency. So we're going to continue to push forward, and we'd like for your support next year, lobbying for such a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from council? Okay, we'll move on to item four A, citizens' input time. There's a maximum of sixty minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. Anyone who wishes to participate in citizens' input will use the podium to my left. Anyone wishing to speak during citizens' input? Okay, say a no, citizens' input is now closed. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is four B, is discussion. B one is personnel salary review. I know the General Union had asked me to put this on the agenda for a discussion, and I asked them to provide some information that was in our backup material, and I will turn it over to Mr. City Manager first on this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's appropriate if Richard Jones discusses what he had requested to present before the council that you allowed, and then I will follow up with my response upon his presentation.
Mr. Jones?
Good morning. Mayor, council, my name is Richard Jones. I am the President of Local Union Two Three Oh One. That represents the general bargaining unit employees here with the city. As you can see, the room's starting to fill up because these folks felt it important enough to be here today to see this presentation. Each and every one of them is off the clock, is using their own personal leave time in order to be here to support this discussion. And so I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to come before you, provide some information, and allow us to be heard on this issue. I've provided each of you with a small binder. It's got a few sheets of paper in it. The top one has some, we were doing comparisons, and I'll get into more detail of those. Then the following documents are comparisons of our job titles versus the job titles in other municipalities. This is nothing new to us. This is something we do on a regular basis when we're entering into negotiations, when we're doing market comparables, when we're doing wage studies, total compensation. So this, these documents strictly show wage comparisons for the city of Cape Coral versus local municipalities. So this is strictly the local operating area, and we use the city of Northport, Charlotte County, Lee County, the city of Fort Myers, the city of Naples, and Collier County. The final sheet in the packet is a calculation of what it would, what the budgetary impact would be if the council were to take some sort of action based on several different If we could jump to, I apologize, they're not numbered, but if we could jump to the second page, which is the comparison between the city of Cape Coral and the city of Fort When we were selecting the classifications to use, we tried to get a good amount of each bargaining unit. Sometimes that's tough because not every municipality has engineers on staff, right? They just don't. So, but we had a small sample here, and we believe it will, it shows where we are in comparison with the wages. When you're looking at these two comparisons with Cape Coral and Fort Myers, you see that it's got the job title, the men in the max range for Cape Coral, the Fort Myers job title, then the men in the max for Fort Myers, and then it has what the delta is for the minimum, the starting salary. So I will, I would like to state that the city of Fort Myers is currently, right now, ratifying a new collective bargaining agreement, which affords every single employee a three-dollar an hour raise, bringing their minimum starting salary for the lowest paid job to fifteen dollars an hour. And that is scheduled to go before City Council next Monday. So that's what this data is from, is based on that tentative agreement that we believe will successfully be ratified by both parties. So with that being said, if we can come down on the Cape Coral side, probably about three-quarters of the way down, you're going to find the job title of laborer. When we look across to Fort Myers, they call it a service worker one, and that starting annual salary will now be thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, leaving us about four-point-one percent behind the equivalent job in Fort Myers. On that note, I was made aware this morning that we currently have a laborer position posted. I've been informed that that position has now been posted for about a week. There are nine vacancies, and we currently have five applicants. I've been informed by the group that they traditionally see forty to sixty applicants for this type of entry-level job. It usually takes them multiple days to conduct interviews, and they're all day-long interviews. So if we can move to page two, which is Cape Coral and Lee County, a couple of highlights here, same job, same Cape Coral job descriptions, Lee County uses a little different job description. If we look at the bottom of the table, on the right-hand side, under the delta in base pay, it indicates a one-point-four percent, which is indicating that we're about one-point-four percent above Lee County. The geo-differential below it is something that we traditionally use with municipalities that are outside of our local operating area. We showed this for you. We do not agree with using it in this particular case. But I want to talk about that one-point-four percent. It is tough for us to compare to Lee County. And the reason being is, is their job descriptions are vague, and they have a wide pay range, where we have more specialized or more detailed job descriptions. And to show that, when we were making the comparison for our job description to theirs, we had to use their job description of senior technician five times, because it was the only thing that was close enough to the jobs that we were comparing it to. Another example is the water plant operator B. City of Cape Coral delineates between a trainee, A, B, C. Lee County has it as one job description, one pay range, A, B, C. So it's a tough comparison. Another thing I would like to add is we were using the classification of telecommunicator for our dispatch area. Our organization hires a nine-one-one operator, which is our call takers, and once they're certified to a certain level, they have the opportunity to move into a telecommunicator, and then they have a couple of steps above there. So again, Lee County has a vague job description, wide range, but I wanted to point out that our telecommunicators, which is our second level in our organization, has a starting pay of forty thousand dollars. Lee County is starting their call takers at forty-five thousand dollars, which is a different, we're about ten-point-eight percent less in pay for our telecommunicators compared to their call takers. So on a side note, on the bottom, I did put what our nine-one-one operators start at, which is thirty-six thousand, four hundred. It's a difference of nineteen percent in an area that is traditionally hard to recruit and hard to retain. And they are the connection between our residents and the emergency services that they need. We can look at the next page, which is Cape Coral and Naples. Here you'll see, in the bottom right corner, the average of the base pay is about seven-point-seven percent less. We are about seven-point-seven percent less than them. There is a geo-differential of five-point-nine, but again, there's nothing preventing me from living in Cape Coral and driving to Naples to go to work. If we jump over to the next page, which is Cape Coral and Collier County, again, another large difference in pay. I'd like to highlight, again, the dispatch trainee, which is four classifications up from the bottom, is starting at forty-five thousand dollars. It's eleven percent different from our nine-one-one operators. Their trainee is making eleven percent more than our certified telecommunicators. Another one that I'd like to highlight here is the building inspectors. Buildings booming, they're hard to get. We're significantly behind Collier County and several of the other municipalities outlined for our building inspectors. Again, into the next page, Cape Coral, Charlotte County, you know, significant difference in the building inspectors, right? In fact, again, the counties generally have vague job descriptions. They only have a residential inspector, and so they're making two-point-two percent more than our highest qualified building inspectors, our building inspector threes. Not next to, I mean, we have the leads or whatever they're called, and the senior inspectors and the supervisors, but our inspectors that are multi-licensed are making less than their residential inspectors. Again, the communication operator recruit in Charlotte County is at forty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars, nine-and-a-half percent more than our certified Eighteen percent more than our entry-level nine-one-one operators. And then we can look at the next page, which is Northport. Again, this is just a two-point-nine percent difference. We're about two-point-nine percent less than them, a geo-differential of one-point-one. So I highlighted a lot, I highlighted a handful of classifications, which are only represented by a handful of people here. It's not just those two or three classifications that I spoke about. The numbers indicate that, on average, we are making less than our counterparts in the local operating area. I'm back on the, on the very first page, and I'd just like to say that the current collective bargaining agreement that we are entered into had an effective date of October one, two thousand and twenty-one. It wasn't ratified until January of two thousand and twenty-two. And the end of two thousand and twenty-one is when we saw the inflation start to kick off. We were already at the eleventh hour, past the end of the previous contract, trying to wrap up a good collective bargaining agreement between the parties. In January of two thousand and twenty-two, when we ratified the CBA, inflation was at seven-point-five percent. And we have steadily seen it in that five-to-nine range, month after month, even through this current month. The last one I saw was five percent. I spoke at a retreat, I believe in March of twenty-two, at Palmetto Pines, and addressed a, it was a joint retreat, I believe, between the Budget Review and City Council. And at that time, I had brought forward the fact that Lee County had just provided, on average, a ten percent increase to all of their employees. Collier Counties, Collier County and Naples had done similar increases around the same After that, I spoke at several joint City Council and Budget Review Committee meetings, expressing my concern regarding the inflation rate and what our local counterparts had I'd like to remind everybody that Lee County, Collier, Naples, and even Charlotte County after that, went outside of their collective bargaining agreements, outside of their normal budget process, and provided these increases because they saw a problem with recruitment and retention, and they needed to do something to be competitive in the market. So if we go to the first page, the box in the top left with So if we go to the first page, the box in the top left with the green header has Cape Coral and the, the local operating municipalities that we used. And when we take that average, based on the, the comparison we did, the average of the average is 5%. So we're here to say, on average, in order to catch us up, we're looking at 5%. And I understand, right? It's a small snapshot. I've, I've expressed some concerns that I myself have in, in making comparisons to some of the, the counties because of the job descriptions they use. But the reality is, our people will leave here to go to the county. Recent circumstance was, uh, gentleman out of the white collar unit, worked with the GIS system. He left the city of Cape Coral to go to Lee County for $40,000 more a year. And he's still not topped out. He left here to go there for more than what we pay our laborers an annual salary. The next, uh, the next box down with the blue header is a geodifferential average. So we took the averages from all of them. We identified the geodifferential, which was supplied by human resources, and came up with a 3.4% average, using a geodifferential that we are behind the other municipalities. I again would respectfully disagree with using a geodifferential in this, when we're looking at local operating areas. It is not unreasonable, as I said before, for anybody to live in Cape Coral and drive across the river to Fort Myers to go to work. Naples, Collier County, we have folks that live in those areas and drive here to work. So I would, I would not, that would not be my top choice, if there was a choice to be Now if we can go up to the top right with the orange header. So we, we looked at, right, doing an average of an average isn't always as accurate as it could be. So what we attempted to do here is take all of the job titles that we had used as comparisons, and we said, what if we had one of each of them? What would that budget impact be? So we added that up, and when we take the average of, of that, it's about 4.8% behind the other municipalities. we had an opportunity to meet with, with staff before we came here. We, we shared the information. We, we got some good feedback from Mr. Mason, Lisa Sinago. And, uh, I think both of us would agree that we could argue until the cows come home about the data and what we should use or shouldn't use, whether we should be looking locally or similar sized city, or whatever the case may be, right? We can always make that argument. So especially when we're talking about percentages, right? Cause our job title may require extra years of service, they may require a higher level degree, but at the end of the day, when we do it together, we make sure that we, they're But I'd just like to say that if, if we have concerns about percentages on percentages or this small snapshot, I think the one thing that we can, can truly agree on is that the municipalities build a pay plan. And your lowest paid in the group is your lowest income, is your lowest salary, and then the salaries increase from there. The final box with the purple header is the starting minimum wage. As you can see here, Cape Coral has the lowest starting wage for our employees in that pay grade, at $14.39 an hour. Fort Myers with their $3 increase, got to the 15. Northport's at $15.31, Charlotte's at $15.50, Naples is at $15.89, Lee County's at $16.10, right? There's that anomaly I was talking about. Their starting wage is $16.10, but the other, the other document indicates that we're a little bit ahead of them. And Collier County is leading the way at $17 an hour. That's, that's for your laborers, it's for your custodians that, that come here and, and keep this facility clean, that they're having trouble recruiting and keeping them here. I could add one more thing to the Fort Myers piece, is, uh, as part of that collective bargaining agreement that they're currently ratifying, they have built in, for the next two years, beginning in this October and the following October, an up to 2% market adjustment based on CPI. So as long as CPI is over 2% in July, they're going to see a 2% market adjustment for all of their salaries, plus their step increase. If we could jump to the back page, please. So this page identifies impacts to the budget based on several scenarios. The current annual payroll amount was obtained by the city through a public records request. I want to say it was in mid, mid February. So some people have come, some people have gone. That first column that says, uh, an annual payroll after 3%. You might ask yourself, well, Richie, you didn't talk about 3% anywhere in, in any of the, the data. That 3% is simply a me too. This union bargained for a 3.25% increase and, and the, uh, council or management saw it fit to give the non-bargaining over 6% this year. That's a me too. But I'm not here to talk about me too. I just wanted to show what it would look like if the, if we used the me too philosophy. It's an annual increase of 1.5 million, and I used a half year, um, I broke it down for a half year impact of $755,000. If we go to the next column, the annual payroll after 4.25%. What's 4.25%? That's what it takes to get us to $15 an hour, which statutorily we have to in a couple of years. But as you can see, the, the local operating market has decided it's necessary to get there now. So 4, 4.25% puts us at $15 an hour. And that would be across the board for all employees. It's not just about the $15 an hour, because if we simply move those that are under $15 an hour, we now create compression. Next column is an annual payroll after 5%. This is the average on the average. We believe we're an average of 5% behind the local operating. The annual payroll after, the next column is 4.8%. That's the aggregate average. And then the annual payroll after 3.4% is the average minus the geodifferential. I fully understand that we negotiated in good faith with the city a collective bargaining I understand that the, the city has the right to provide wage increases for the non-bargaining employees as it see fits. I understand that the IAFF and the FOP negotiated their collective bargaining agreements, and, and they are receiving compensation based on those negotiations, which is why I truly want to stay away from the me too. This, this is about a request to take action for an issue that we have, which is recruiting and retaining employees and being competitive in the market. And I'm asking you to follow the lead of some of the other local municipalities and step outside of your normal budget process, step outside of the normal collective bargaining, and see if we can't find a way to make the salaries of these employees, your employees, competitive in the market. the ability to recruit and retain, right? That's another one that we can argue, right? Both sides can, can argue whether, whether we're having an issue or not. But I received a text message last night from an employee that's been here nine years. She's at Step 5. She happens to be in one of those hard-to-recruit classifications. They brought somebody in off the street at Step 5. City has the right to. I don't know what it does for her morale. Actually, I do. It kills the morale. And the reason, at least our opinion, that we continue to bring people in above the minimum wage is because the salaries are not competitive. We can argue, well, this guy or gal has 30 years' experience and they warrant more money and, and we can go back and forth. But we stand on that final chart on page one with the purple header that shows that we have the lowest starting wage in the local operating area. So I'm here today to request that you consider looking at some sort of action to take care of your most valuable asset, which is your employees. Thank you for your time.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go to the podium as well to show some documents that were previously. So what I'm going to present is a total compensation analysis that was performed in 2015 in conjunction with labor and management, and utilize this to discuss how, how I believe we should move forward. I don't disagree with, with any of the statements that were made. Let me just say that. I don't believe arguing is something that we should be putting on the table. I firmly believe that, um, the represented employees are also our employees, which are also your employees. We have a responsibility to make sure that we provide a fair and competitive compensation package. And when I say compensation package, I mean total compensation. That does not include just salaries, but we're also competing between vertical and horizontal governments in the area, as well as the private sector. So in order to balance that competition, we do have employees that will go to and from. You heard one example, I guess, of an employee that I, I know of that did go to GIS job. We do know employees that work for us. There's probably some sitting in the audience that live in other cities or other counties and come to us. So how do we balance all that out? And, and what do we utilize to, to determine how to set a, a total compensation package? So in, in 2015, we, we sat down with all the labor unions, including police and fire, and we sought to put together a, a document that was comprehensive, looking at direct compensation, indirect compensation, which is all the employee-paid benefits, as well as looking at what employees then are required to pay, which the, which nets out their pay, and then ultimately looks at the final. So what, what we set out to do is look at the base wages. I know there were several counties that were used here. Typically, in a, what you're trying to do is look at similar type cities. There are different types of governments. As you know, counties provide different services. And so what you do is you look at different types of cities, cities only. You have to look at job descriptions that are alike amongst different, um, different cities. So you, you saw some of the job descriptions that were picked there. You try to stay within the Florida market so that you can use a geo. You don't want to compare to, you know, Manhattan, or, you know, San Francisco, or, you know, Austin, Texas. And then you try to find sizes that are similar in taxable value or in geographic area so that you're comparing kind of, what would it be like to be in a position in the city versus a position in another city, providing similar services to a similar size? Now, this is where, where the cities comes into is, we don't, I don't want to argue about the data. And I don't think that you all want to, want to argue about the data as well. So I respect that Richie went out and, you know, Lee County, Collier County, you know, he was looking at, you know, our area specifically, to see how we are in the market locally. But what I believe we should do is labor and management should, as we did in 2015, look at similar cities and agree upon those cities. This way, there is no arguing over the facts. We don't have to, we don't have to do that. We can set those comparables. We can jointly select the list of positions. There was a basket of positions that were chosen. That's, that's fine. Not disputing any of the data that was collected. We did, uh, meet with Richie prior to this meeting to discuss, um, our general philosophy, which, you know, he's aware of. He participated in, in this analysis, um, in 2015, as well as other members. And then from there, what, what happens is you go out and collect all the data from the comparable cities and those specific jobs that, that you pulled together. And then there's a list of all the people that are involved, you know, back when we did this one in, in 2015. I'm sure most of those employees are still here. Remember the entire process. So what comes out of, out of the analysis? What comes out of the analysis is, is two things. And I'm going to show you a, a job classification specific analysis. And then this one just happens to be, what, what if we have a constant base of 45,000? So if you want to take the average of our city, or if you want to take the average of a, or the, the most populated, populated position in the city. So here, here we have So here, here we have basically a $45,000 position. And then what you do is you look at all the health insurance benefits, whether it's employer cost or employee cost, insurance, retirement benefits, the pension calculations, how much the employee puts in versus how much the employee, employer, employee. And you, you move down into what it costs for insurance, whether it's employee-only, whether it's family, or it's total. And so the outcome basically shows you, what it will tell you is that for a $45,000, oop, sorry, for a $45,000 position, the total compensation package of all costs is 57,000 to the employer and 4,700 to the employee. Now, when you're looking at a family package, at the, this is again, back from 2015, it was 57,000 and 10,000 for the employee to have family coverage. We do that across all of the cities and look at, basically, what does that same $45,000 position pay to the employee and what is the, what is the employee then have to give back in order to get a compensation package? So it's not just looking at the salary itself, it's looking at the total package that the, that we're putting together, putting out there to recruit and retain individuals. The base salary that was discussed here is, is, is your entry into the door. All these other elements that are layered in to our compensation package are essentially the retention package. This is the last item that I want to discuss, so here is, and again, this is from 2015, this is a building inspector. And so, what you can look at is at the time, the city was paying for entry level, $43,000 to come in the door. You look at Coral Springs, they were at 44, Fort Lauderdale, 50, Gainesville, 41, Miramar, 41, Pembroke Pine, 64, Tallahassee, 32. This slate of cities were the chosen comparable cities based on population, based on city services, and so forth. Then what happens is you'd look at the minimum, range minimum, and the maximum. And then we have to decide, and at, back in 2015, management was, was successful getting the council to agree that the 75th percentile in the market was the point we wanted to be. We didn't want to be average or below average, because then you're not getting the best of the best. And then when, we didn't want to pay the most, because we didn't want to be driving the market, we wanted to be a part of it, but not driving it. So we, management, union, and labor, back in 2015, had said, the 75th percentile in the market is where we need to be. Above mediocre, but not leading the market, not driving, not pushing the maximum. So, in this case, when you apply the geo-differentials and you come down, the 75th percentile of all those comparables in take-home pay would have been 49,000. Now you do this, we did the same thing for all the other direct compensation that all these cities paid. Longevity pay, leave buybacks, if there's a leave buyback, any additional ad pays that are available for certification. So you're looking at that building inspector, what is the possibility of their maximum take-home? And it was 46. We did the same thing to all those cities, 75th percentile there was 51, and then when you apply the geo-differential, the 75th percentile was still 51. Now, from this 46,000, which has all the add-ons, now you look at what are, because again, when we're negotiating, we're not just negotiating salary, we're negotiating salary and benefits. So now, we're talking about what are those things that are, are shared, shared by the employee, what comes out of their paycheck? So in this case, that's health insurance, the employees in the Cape, we don't, the city pays, but in other cities, the employees pay. Dental insurance, retirement, and you have basically a, a total, employees' paid total costs. This is 2015, building inspector, we were at $4,800. You go across here, you look at 29, 32, 33, basically, the 75th percentile was about $4,500. So in that case, we were having our employees share a little bit more than 75% of the market. And so we, when you're going into negotiations, then you can look to kind of counterbalance all of these things. Maybe there's a way, you don't give them direct compensation, that may not adjust, if you, if you're not just looking at the $15, you can still get money back into the employees' by-pocket by lowering some of that direct indirect compensation that they're having to pay out. So when you, you go down to, you do the geo-differential, and then in the geo-differential, this one was, is kind of strange, because it, it really skews some of the numbers that, that get paid, but that one was 90, $9,100 for in the, employee-paid costs. So now you, now what happens is you take the employee compensation, the indirect compensation that the employer pays, you net out what the employee pays, and you wind up basically, oh, let me, I'm sorry, let me just go through the indirect compensation, so the, these are health insurance paid costs by the employer, dental insurance, life insurance, long-term disability, retirement, same exact thing, 12, 12,600, 11,2, 12,600. So now you're kind of layering back in all the, all those costs for the, for the benefit package that is on the table, and you wind up with a subtotal. So back in 2015, we're at $53,000 for a building inspector, 55, 62, 48, 49, 75th percentile was 60, and then once you do the geo-differential, it was 66. So this would have, this would have been the target that we set in, heading into negotiations for the next round, how do we build a total compensation package that takes our 53, 53,000 to either 60, or if you're looking at the geo-differential, our 44 to 66? And that looks at the entire package. Now, the reason that I bring this up is my understanding is we, we have not updated any of this data. There may have, in its entirety, since 2015. So I, I did bring Richie in prior to his presentation being added to the agenda, and I let him know that my recommendation was going to be that we update this, and I have already met with our finance director, assistant city manager, and our HR director to begin the process, and I've been advised that we could have this completed by October. So my recommendation is, we update this, this booklet. We understand where we are, not only with just entry-level pay, but indirect and direct compensation as well. And then that will give us a picture to figure out, where do we collectively want to go? What percentile, I still believe 75th percentile is, is a good target and is something that we should strive to achieve. If you don't maintain it, just like a vehicle, just like a building or a facility, it can get away from you, but you have to do the data and you have to do the research. Again, I'm not, I have, I don't dis, disbelieve any of the data that was presented. I believe it to be true and accurate, we, we've fact-checked a couple of positions, not all of them. But, in order to set a total compensation package that will not only retract and retain individuals for an entire career, we need to be looking at all aspects of pay, not just the starting, starting wage. And so my recommendation, as I've explained to, to the labor unit and to you all, is that we, we continue, I'm gonna move forward with updating this information to be done by October. And then, and as part of this process, labor will be with us, determining the comparable cities, this isn't a, you know, us versus them, it's, let's decide what it is, we'll bring to you all the comparable cities, you all agree, we go collect the data, and it is what it is. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden?
I almost feel like we've started contract negotiations in public without council having some of this information. What I'd rather, if you have said first, was that you wanted to update something that was eight years old right away, rather than wait for us to get through an entire presentation, because the only thing I could think about was why are we using eight-year-old numbers when the economy has completely, completely changed, so please think about that in the future, give me the reason why you're saying, what you're saying ahead of time, before we do that. If our employees are underpaid in any, any level and we can start to fix that now, ahead of the next collective bargaining agreement, then we need to take a look at that. Number two, Richie, I think it's always tough going first in contract negotiations, because you're kind of starting the baseline. It's kind of like that first gymnast that gets to go first and set a score, and it kind of builds from there, so I know it's a difficult position to be in, we've had that conversation before. I get confused sometimes, because the city uses five cities to compare with for the 75th percentile. I think maybe only one of those cities was in the information that Richie presented. I do not dispute your numbers either, I guess the only argument I would make for you is using Lee County, because in most of your data, it appeared we were ahead of them. They put in a 10% raise, because none of their employees had gotten any increases for five or six years, so they were still, they were trying to play catch-up then. I think they're still trying to play, play catch-up, so. But I guess the bottom line for me, as we, as we enter into negotiations next year, or even now, what can we do to fix a problem? I don't think any of our employees should be below minimum of anybody in the area. You know, and I, I don't think that's right, we've had that conversation before a lot, I know it's not a lot of employees that are below that $15 minimum, but, but there are. I would like to see numbers as well, Richie, if you have them at some point, or Mike, if you can get them, on what the retention rates are for those other cities that, and counties that appear to be above us in salary. I do believe you have to look at the total compensation, I think that's part of it, I think that's, I think that's only fair. As far as it, Richie, the cities that you used, I think and, and going to that 5%, I think Collier County kind of skews the average a little bit, because they were 5 or 6% ahead of the other cities that you used, so, but even at that, where, if you take them out, we're still 3.7% behind, I believe, in those cities, but I think it's a good time to start a process that I know needs to be looked at with current numbers, not numbers that are eight years old. So, that's all I have to say for now.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you, I looked through all the numbers as we do every year, and for me personally, I don't see a problem with doing a 5% to get us caught up, and then going through the study like we normally would do anyways. Like Councilmember Hayden said, the, the city employees started first, and then we kind of played catch-up with fire and police, and, and their packages were much greater, so I think we need to take care of the people that take care of us, and I would support doing something 5% in the meantime, and then going on with that wage study and the new look at everything that the city manager said, so thank you.
Councilmember Cummings?
Yes, thank you, great presentations, by the way, and I want to first start by saying thank you for all of you, for what you do. I do know most of you, I've watched you work in the heat, you're up at 2, 3 in the morning, a lot of you to take care of broken pipes, trenches, just helping us out. When I first started, I did look at payroll, and I did bring it up, I, I couldn't believe what some of you guys make. And in today's economy, it's very hard to raise a family on some of your salaries. And that doesn't include your insurance or your taxes. So I am in favor of even more than 5% to just get caught up. You know, the mayor has said it once, and I'm in agreement with mayor and Mike Gilcham, I want to be better than average. I want us to be a great city, and the employees do deserve the best. You're welcome. And it is hard for us, for you guys, to find more workers, because who's gonna come work for $13 an hour? And we are lacking, and I am glad you brought this forward, because it's time, and I'm in favor to start immediately to bring that up, so we can start getting people hired. Our city is a population of 210,000, and we are growing. It's a big population, and it's a lot of land, so I'm in favor of this. And it's something I feel we shouldn't wait till October. We're in need of help, you can't even get people right now. So if we can bring this wage up, I feel that we can get more people on board to help what we're lacking. So I want to thank you, all of you for coming out, and thank you, Mike, for bringing this forward, so.
Councilmember? Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you, Mayor, I too, thank you for, for bringing this up, and I, I appreciate the detail in, in being able to see all of the different job classifications. Certainly, with the anomaly of low unemployment and high inflation that we've experienced over the past couple of years, it's put a strain on a lot of things. The timing of the collective bargaining agreement, to some degree, couldn't have been worse with the thought that you're fixing an employment rate when expenses don't get fixed. And so, I would certainly be in favor of, of adjusting across the board and the analysis that Richie brought and showing the different percentages, that's to me, that's just a Band-Aid, though, and so I'm, when I see the job differences and we look at somewhere where, where one particular classification is, you know, 10% ahead and, and one is 8% behind, just a percentage increase across the board doesn't solve that problem, and so I'm glad that the study that was done in the past could be, could be repeated, so that every classification can be looked at, and I'm assuming that's what that study does, it goes across the board for all of the positions?
Yeah, so generally, what, what we would do is we would try to, we would select positions that are, that exist in other cities, such as building inspector, CSR, permit tech, water plant operator, equipment operator. And then, what happens is you build schedules where like positions in the organization fit within them, and so you adjust the whole scale throughout the entire organization. And so, basically, you don't, you don't have to survey every single position, but you survey enough that you can build your total, your, your classification schedule to accommodate all.
And then you're able to make adjustments, not in a broad brush, but a, a more targeted salary adjustment?
Well, when you're, when you're making those type of discretionary movements, that's basically your, your grade between, in the classification schedule. So you're, you're trying to set the schedule to make sure that that schedule for all positions is at the 75th percentile. When you're looking at a specific position, whether or not it is, is at the right starting salary or not, that's whether or not it, it needs to move up or down one grade or not.
Okay.
You can do that, but that's not the overall goal, the overall goal is to set the entire compensation package to the market.
Okay, well, thank you for that explanation, and I, it's, it's obvious that there are a few classifications that when we're trying to be in the 75th percentile and we're trying to compete in a, you know, a 2% to 3% unemployment condition, that we ought to look at some of those positions as it relates to attracting the right people and being able to retain the right people. And I absolutely agree that the total economic package is, is important. It's, it's not all a direct monetary compensation, and I think it was said, certainly, the, the, the base pay attracts the people, but the total package keeps the people, so I'm glad it's brought up, I'm, I'm, I'm fully in favor of something across the board because of the circumstances that we're in, but that I'm also fully supportive of a more detailed analysis for an overall refresh of our compensation.
Councilmember Shepard?
When I ran for this position, one of my personal goals was to elevate the financial demographic of our city. Because I believe that by raising the financial demographic of the city, it helps alleviate a lot of our problems and being able to pay our, our staff. of the city, it helps alleviate a lot of our problems and being able to pay our, our staff. So, what I would like to say is we, we, I think we achieved that over the last few years. Our real estate has skyrocketed. Our city is, is, we're winners. That's all I'm going to say. You guys are all winners. One of the things that, when our city manager gave the list of the other comparison cities, what he, what, what he failed to show was what it costs for the people with them positions to live in that city. That's the difference. So, even where there were cities that paid a little less, what did they pay to live there? That should be part of the, part of the equation, so. So, we have to look at, look at it all. But what I know is that the people in this room help elevate our city, and they need to be able to afford to live here. And I believe that the starting salary should be a minimum of seventeen dollars an hour. And that we try to get around ten percent overall. When I look at the comparison of Naples, we're neck and neck with Naples, I believe, when it comes to our value and our city, what we have to offer. We're becoming the best Cape Coral. And what I mean by that is, I sat, I sat in this room for many years and heard different leaderships say, what, what are we trying to be like? We're trying to be like these other communities? No, we're, I don't want to try to be like anybody else. I want us to be the best Cape Coral. And I believe that it took a staff, and it took a council and leadership and the city employees and the people like you that go out there and do the best you can, and, and you built this, you guys built this city, basically, and we're winners, and our values are, are just skyrocketing, and we need to take care of the people that built that, and they need to be able to at least live here. And I know you applauded at seventeen, but I'm going to be honest with you, I'm a business owner. It's extremely, extremely hard to get people to even start at seventeen dollars an hour. But it's not my business for me to give the money away. I think a lot of you do a tremendous job. I appreciate everyone here, but I'm, I'm going to do the best I can with my position to, to put that starting rate at seventeen, because I think that's the bare minimum and ten percent overall, but I want to also learn more. We have to learn a lot more about all the positions, the ones that are underpaid, and, and find out what we can do to improve all that. Thank you.
Councilmember Cogston.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick to correct something. The geographic differential, cost of living for various locations, was included in that data, correct? Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much to the employees who came out today. It's so good to see this room full. And I think you can hear it right now from us. We, we support you and we understand where you're coming from and what you're asking for. When I first came on is 2015, and that study that we've talked about was just getting wrapped up, and I remember how monumental it was for the city as far as transparency and fairness, and I think we need to repeat that study. I think it's way past time for that. I do have issues with the data that was presented today, just the sample size was small and the position sample size was also small. But Richie was right when he said, really, we don't have to fight over the data because the fact remains that there's a problem, a discrepancy. The starting minimum wage alone is a big problem. So, I would definitely consider an across-the-board increase, but I'd rather look at the data, go to October, and then make a retro pay increase. I think that would make the most sense because some of these positions may need more than five percent to get where they need to be. And so, I think just an, an across-the-board five or whatever percent doesn't make the best sense, even though it sounds great right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, listen, I don't disagree. I think a core tenet of any successful organization at the start is you got to take care of your people. I don't disagree that we need to bring the compensation up to surrounding municipalities. You know, I also don't disagree that, that it would be a good idea to address this before we get to the, the collective bargaining agreement. Where I do disagree a little bit is, is some of my councilmembers up here throwing numbers around without us really getting a full detailed analysis as to what that means in the big picture. Typically, when we do these sorts of things, we're presented with a ton of data. Here today, I appreciate the mayor and, and city manager for giving you guys the opportunity to speak and present your case, but I, I would have liked a little bit more on our end so that we knew what we were looking at before we just said this number, that number, this percentage. Certainly want to get to where we feel that you guys deserve. You do deserve it. That's not what I'm saying here. I'm saying I think it's a little reckless to come up here and tell you, this is what you're going to get, or this is what you need, without us being able to look at the big picture, and, and for me, we haven't got there yet. I would say, though, with that being said, that we do need to, to jumpstart this. I would like to get that information and that data sooner rather than later so that we can get this addressed. Yeah, but for me, I, I think that there's a lot more to this that merits some more discussion and some data from our finance department, but I'm eager to look forward, or I look forward to, to addressing this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. First off, let me say, I agree with some of the comments that my colleagues made. You know, we're only as good as our people. And, you know, I've been a business owner myself for thirty-six years, and one thing that I've learned, you have to surround yourself with great people if you want to be a great organization. And I want to thank each and every one of you for your hard work, your dedication to this city, and I think you should be compensated accordingly. And when I say that, you know, I've been here for five and a half years. Our methodology has always been the seventy-fifth percentile. That's all you've ever heard. I think we've applied that with the police department. I think we've applied that to the fire department. But I think we have failed to some degree with our general union. So, now is the, for me, a golden opportunity that we need to take a look at that. For me, you have to apply the expectation across the board. I don't care who you are, if you're the lowest individual or the highest individual. You, you set that methodology and that expectation, and then you have to see what it's going to take to get there. So, for me, you know, I'm a data-driven individual. I want to see the data. I want to see the research to make a good informed decision. And kind of like what Councilmember Long alluded to, there's a dollar amount that's going to be equated to whatever we decide to do, and we have to see what that number is as well when we're making this decision. And when you look down some of the data that Mr. Jones provided, in many instances, we're behind. In some instances, we're ahead. So, for me, I think we need to go down each individual position and take a look at that salary range. To sit here and say, hey, we should throw three percent at it or five percent at it, I'm a little uncomfortable with that, mainly because it's going to do a disservice to you, because your position may show you need an eight percent raise. So, why do I want to only give you a three percent or a five percent? So, for me, I want to go down the list of all the positions and take a look at it on a case-by-case basis, and then see what that budgetary impact would be to get you in that seventy-first percentile. Because when you look down the data that Mr. Jones just provided, you know, I see some that were even, I see some were ten percent, I see some that were thirteen or twenty-seven percent ahead. So, I want to look at each individual position. Now, in order to do that, just like we did back in 2015, we have to, to agree, the city and the union has to agree on the comparable cities. Now, for me personally, I think we have to have a combination of two things. You have to have the local comparison, like Mr. Richie brought here today. But also, I think we need to have, on a more broader look, like was done in 2015, they only looked at similar-sized cities. I think there were six of them. I tried to count them pretty quickly. For me, I think the union and the city need to come together, pick ten cities, five local cities, five cities that are comparable in size. Because as we know, if you live in Cape Coral, you can drive anywhere within an hour pretty easily as an employee to get to a job. You know, if, if the benefits are better or the pay's better, you know, you'll jump in your car and it may be worth that drive. So, I think we have to have that when we're looking at the data, some local municipalities or counties, and also similar-sized cities. So, that's why I would suggest five and five. Come up with an agreement going into the process when you're looking at the data. These are our ten cities that we're going to utilize. The other thing that the city manager put up on the board was some of the, the benefits as well, which I agree, a compensation package is a compensation package. It's not only salary, but everything that's involved as well. But some of the things that I saw on, on there may not apply. You know, you have to pay into the retirement. That's mandatory. Is it mandatory to do the life insurance? Is it mandatory to participate in long-term disability? I don't know. But if it's not mandatory, I think you take that off the table for me personally, because the employee doesn't have to participate in that. I want to look at the things that you have to participate in when you're looking at the Health insurance, I think pretty much, you know, we provide the health insurance to all the employees. You have to pay for any additional family members, just like I do. I think what I would like to see is take the next four months, I want to make sure you get what you deserve. If I just throw a three percent out there or a five percent out there, we may not be at that seventy-fifth percentile. So, that's where I'm at. I want to make sure that you get, get to that seventy-fifth percentile in your position, because your position, seventy-fifth percentile, may be a ten percent increase, where another position, it may only be three percent. So, I think if we're going to use that seventy-fifth percentile methodology, we don't do it across the board. We do it for every single position to make sure your position is taken care of in that, in that seventy-fifth percentile. So, that's where I'm at with it. City manager had mentioned, he and I had a discussion yesterday. Probably take about four months, sounds like October. One thing that I would ask the city manager to do is, you know, we're going to have to think about this for our upcoming budget, and, you know, at least make sure that we put something in there where we know this increase is probably going to happen. I'm a firm believer, as soon as we have the data, we'll make the decision. I'm not going to make you wait until October of '24. So, hopefully in the next four months, we can get that data, we can come back to the table, and if we want to do it retroactive, I'm okay with that, you know, but you got to pick a point. Where, where are we going to be retroactive to? To me, it's more important to get it right the first time, not just throw something on the wall and hope it sticks. And the only way to do that is to have the data. Now, as far as the fifteen dollars an hour minimum wage, or we're at fourteen-thirty-nine, I could have swore we had this conversation back when Mr. Hernandez was here, and I thought it may have been in retreat. I don't know if it was the winter retreat or, or the one before that. I know we've had that discussion, and I know this council directed him to get us to the fifteen dollars an hour at that time. If I recall correctly, it was less than thirty employees. Mr. City Manager, does that ring a bell to you?
I'm going to ask if Lisa Sinago can come and discuss what, whatever was previously discussed.
Yeah. I know we had some type of discussion. It was even mentioned how many employees that that really even affected, and it was very minimal.
Hi, Lisa. Sorry. Lisa Sinago, Human Resources Director. Great conversations today. What was previously discussed was bringing up the fifteen dollars. That was during some strategic sessions. That would create compression, as Mr. Jones mentioned and we discussed at the time, but so at that time, fifteen dollars was not moved up because it would just be those twenty-plus employees, and that was not of interest. And so, much as today, the interest is to move, what I'm hearing from Mr. Jones is move the full ranges, not just the twenty-plus employees. I don't believe that's what's being discussed by the union.
Thank you.
So, you are correct about the conversation, but the outcome, yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So, I think for me personally, the data is, is important. The minimum wage, I could probably address sooner rather than later. Again, if we try to be in that seventy-fifth percentile, if you look at Sheet One, just with the local comparable cities, you know, we're going to probably be somewhere between Lee County and Cogia County. I know Councilmember Shepard had mentioned seventeen. I would have an appetite, and, and maybe once we pick those five or those ten cities, that, that analysis probably could be completed pretty quickly, or where, where we should be with that minimum wage, or do we want to be somewhere between Lee County and Cogia County? I know Councilmember Shepard mentioned seventeen. I wrote down early on before he said that, sixteen-fifty. So, that's where, you know, I'm at, and I would, I would have an appetite to try to correct that sooner rather than later, because, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how somebody lives off fourteen dollars an hour. It's got to be tough. So...
Can we vote to fix that right now?
We don't vote today on anything. It's a Cal meeting. So, that's where I'm at, and I see a few other lights have popped on for the second round, so I think I've explained pretty much where, what my position is. Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, because October is, is, is pretty far away, this five months, and the inflation from food to housing insurance, gas, vehicles. Is there any way we can do a small increase, a small increase until the rest of the data comes out, so at least we're getting up to the average versus being below average? Even if it's two, three percent, everyone likes bonuses, so it'd be like a little bonus for them until we get to the October data. And then we, we can look at that and then go from there. I mean, is this something we can consider, Mayor?
Well, I'll be honest with you, for me, I'll just give you my personal opinion on that. You know, when you look down this first sheet, you got a recreational specialist making twenty-seven percent more than Fort Myers, you got a trade specialist making thirteen percent above, so, you know, I guess we could do that. Like I said, I'm a data person. If, if it shows at a particular position that we're even exceeding the seventy-fifth percentile, I'm not interested in doing just an across-the-board raise for that, because if that's what the data shows, it may not show that. So, or you may look down at another one that's, you know, sixteen and a half percent a construction inspector, or you take twenty percent for a permit coordinator, just using Fort Myers data, that's twenty percent behind. They're going to get more of a raise. So, you know, I guess that's a discussion collectively as council. Maybe we need to determine here today, do we want to collect the data first, or do we want to, or do we want to do some type of a percentage across the board, like we've done everything in the past? That would be a decision or a consensus collectively that we could, you know, mention to that.
The reason why I think this is a good idea to, to put this together, we don't want to lose who we have. I know we've lost a few already to go to other cities, and we're already shorthanded. And if we can help who we have to show them we appreciate them, it gives us time to get the data, and then we would look at it again and bring it back in October. This is the reason why I feel like it's very important. It's, I mean, several months are here, and just, I mean, the inflation insurance alone has, has just doubled and tripled.
Okay. Are you done?
Thank you.
Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say is, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, throw something at the wall by saying the five percent. I think the five percent is something we can do in the meantime while we collect all this data and we figure everything out. I don't think five percent, even if someone who might be, you know, over the percentage, if you look at Fort Myers, you know, we're over on recreation leader. So, and I don't think that five percent is really going to hurt the fact that we're overpaying a position or underpaying. I think what it does is it helps us get to that middle ground before we start the negotiations and then dig deeper into each individual position. So that's why I was supporting the instant five percent and then definitely supporting the wage study. As you know, back at the retreat, I was, or last year, when they put the wage study on the, on the fund, the fund balance money that we had. And, you know, that didn't go through because this council didn't agree that that was one of the five items that we had to choose from. That was one of the ones that I chose. So I do think that we're behind the game here. And a five percent shows to our employees that we're willing to work with them and we appreciate them. And then knowing that, you know, a study coming later on in the next six months to correct everything is important. So that's why I was, I'm not, you know, like I said, I'm not trying to just throw a Band-Aid on a wound, but I think five percent shows our employees that we're here for them and we want to get this right. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Looking at what the full body of council has discussed this morning...
We got several other lights on just saying that.
That's fine. It appears that council is looking at doing something. I have not had an opportunity to discuss any detailed financials with our finance director to understand what funds these, this one million, two million, whatever the number is. I would at least like to request some time to meet with staff and determine where these funds are going to come from and come back to you. So regardless of where you land, you know, we do have to do it during a voting meeting, but I still would like the opportunity to review our financials and bring back, as was stated, a detailed picture of what that means. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yeah, I agree with a lot that you said, Mayor. I believe we should look at this more thoroughly. I believe that there's some positions that aren't that far off or maybe they're at the right place at this time. But what I do not want to wait months for is the handful of people that are below fifteen. I was under the impression that we took care of that, and we obviously didn't. So I would like us to, as soon as possible, give relief to that group of people. I mean, it's almost insulting that, you know, that we're not doing something immediately, but as soon as possible, give some relief. Like you said, it was a handful. I think it was thirty-something individuals.
Less than thirty, I think.
Yeah. I mean, because it's really hard to replace people, but it's not about replacing. To me, it's about taking care of the people we have. And I think they're the number one on my list, that we should at least do something to take care of that group.
Good. Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. I too am a data-driven decision-maker. And my sentiments are the same as Councilmember Shepherd. I think that the people that aren't at the fifteen dollars, something needs to be done right away. Doing the math, if doing something for those folks was done across the board, so there wasn't compression, it's 4.239 percent. According to the math, that's about ten dollars a citizen. And I kind of look at this, that every single person in this room and the ones that couldn't make it here today certainly affect the lives of those 210,000 people. And so, to some degree, I think it's a whatever it takes. We need to get that taken care of right away. I used to be a certified financial planner and we had a saying that everyone tends to live at their own level of poverty. And so, you adjust your budget to what you make, you do the things, you live the way you want to live. And when we see something happen like we've seen here over the last two to four years, that level of poverty and the pressure that making the bills and whatnot gets tougher and tougher. And so, I'd be in favor of doing something across the board quickly and then go, you know, the position-by-position analysis when we have the data and adjusting those. And so, however that works out in speaking with finance and where would the money come from and whatever, I hope that somehow in that analysis that you would take a look, if we did something across the board and not just for thirty people, what that would look like, what that would take, and then consider that in our budgetary process that we're about to enter.
Mr. Mayor May?
Yes.
If you're just looking at addressing the people that are below the fifteen dollars an hour, I believe that that's going to be negotiable because it's not being applied uniformly across the entire organization. And I think that is what our HR director was trying to say when that directive was brought back to the union. The union did not agree to addressing just that handful of individuals because they didn't want to bring the people at the bottom up and then compress into the people above them. And so that initiative did not move forward. So I think there wasn't, it sounded, based on what I've, I'm hearing you all say and what I heard Lisa say, it sounded like that directive was taken back to the table, but there was not a common agreement on how to address it. In regards to looking at individual positions, I know some of you are more data-driven than others. If we take, I'm just going to give you an example to help maybe explain some of this. So if we take that one that is really high, that recreation leader, it could be that ours is higher because they have to do programming with special needs, whereas the one in Fort Myers doesn't. And so there could be nuances within each classification that allow, or that's where that adjustment, there was a request, can you make an adjustment? And I said, yes, in the classification schedule, we may bump that up a pay grade and make it a little bit more valuable than Fort Myers because we may be requiring it to do something a little more than Fort Myers. Another example may be the trades worker. In Lee County, and I'm just, this is a hypothetical, they may not have to do plumbing. But in Cape Coral, we require our trades worker to do plumbing work. And so braising and dealing with, you know, heat and, you know, sewagees maybe makes our position a little bit higher. So again, when you're looking at this, you know, you look at the entire classification schedule and then the subject matter experts look at, okay, within that schedule, should this be one up or one down? Are we requiring a little more or a little less than any of the comparables? So I just wanted to kind of explain some of the differences.
Would it be helpful for you today to maybe go down the line of council members as far as the minimum pay and kind of see what their thinking is? And then that will help you bring that data back to us because for argument's sake, say if we say it's sixteen fifty, it's not just going to probably affect those 25 people. It's going to affect everyone that's from sixteen fifty below. So we have to see what that impact is going to be. Would that be helpful information for you today so you can bring that back to us when you bring the other data? Like if you show, okay, if you do a three percent across the board, this is what it costs. If it's five percent, that here's where it is. And then you could also put in there, hey, if you want to be at X amount of dollars for minimum salary, would that information be beneficial to you?
I don't believe so, and here's why. I think that what I can do is say, just to get to fifteen percent and adjust the entire scale, here's what that is, here's the minimum required. I believe...
Fifteen percent?
Fifteen dollars.
Oh, okay.
If I understood, and again, this is if you're using this data, but I believe that what was presented was to get to the fifteen dollars an hour, it was a 4.25 percent adjustment. And then when you apply that 4.25 across the entire classification scale, that results in a $2.1 million budgetary impact. And if you apply that from April forward, one million. So if there's a thought process that maybe it's more than that, all we have to do is say fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and then we can infer in between. So I don't know that you all need to go on record.
Okay.
I can go back with HR and finance and we can run some examples. And then I can really dive into how much of that million, if we implemented this year, how much of that million is water and sewer funded? How much is general funded? How much is stormwater funded? How much is building funded? And I can, we can have a more of a complete picture on what that means.
Okay. Councilmember Long?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Mr. City Manager, the fact that we're kind of still going back and forth and discussing this is surprising to me, given that we don't have any data. I think at this point, it's pretty clear that there's a consensus or somewhat of a consensus that we want to try to take a two-pronged approach, right? One, immediately or as immediate as we can. And then in the long term, having some more data to decide how we want to address the longer-term prospects, not necessarily for the CBA, but for moving forward and getting there. We're not doing anybody any favors here by continuing to discuss it. I would suggest that if we do agree that there's a two-pronged approach, that we treat it as such and we give you some sort of directive that in the short term, that we come back here at the next Cal or the Cal after with more data to address what we're all deciding that we want to do in the short term. And then we'll have that discussion in a longer format in the next month or two or whatever we had proposed, to give them more of what they're here asking today. That would be my suggestion moving forward. We're not doing anyone any favors continuing to throw numbers out without having any idea of the impacts that that would have on the city budget or anything else. It's like buying a new car without looking at your own bank account. So I would suggest that you come back to us in the short term with something that has been proposed up here with regards to an immediate five percent or whatever that percentage is to address them in the short term. And then in the long term, we look at that as well. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
And what type of time period are you thinking, Mr. City Manager, to collect that type of data? Like Councilmember Long, just, you know, you have the short term and the long term. I guess the short term is what we're most interested in, in the short term. So how long will it take you think to collect that data?
I haven't had a chance to discuss it with finance, but I mean, we have all these numbers. It's just a matter of running some examples, so...
Two weeks in our next Cal meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll go to Councilmember Cummings. And then, Mr. Jones, I'm going to give you the last opportunity. Do you have any comments or anything you want to say? Councilmember Cummings?
Thank you. So my question is, for the next Cal meeting, you're saying that we would have the numbers to be presented and then we can go ahead and talk about possibly doing the increase for them immediately? The two-part system, like you were saying?
Well, at our next regular meeting thereafter. Because Cal meetings, you can't vote on anything.
Right. But to talk about it, to bring forward on the agenda to vote...
Come up with a consensus, give the city manager the direction, and then we could have put it on the agenda the following week.
So my question, and all due respect with everybody here, we have a lot of the data that was given to us that's here. No? Okay. Got it. I'm hoping though, at least we can come to an agreement to bring the wage up somewhat.
Well, I think that's what the city manager is going to bring that data, bring the budgetary numbers to see exactly how that's going to impact. And then, once we see that, I think we'll have two decisions, a short term and a long term.
Okay.
And I think that's the direction we're heading. We should be able to have that information within two weeks.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion from council? I don't see any. So, Mr. Jones, I'll give you the last opportunity.
Mayor, council, I want to first say thank you for the opportunity to bring forward this item and to have this thoughtful discussion about the wages here in the city. I guess, you know, a lot of great discussion and a lot of thoughts and ideas. And for me, the simplest thing in my mind is get us equal with what's around us in the short term. Move the scales so that that minimum is at the fifteen and we're at least equal while we're conducting the study. You know, I'm sure there'll be more discussions between us and the management team regarding the study. I'm, I'll be curious as to where we end up on the final scope of the study. There, to, I don't know that we'll be able to complete it in four months if we're looking at all 300 classifications. That's, I don't know of another municipality that's going to, other than just ship you their entire classification list and say, here's what we got, and now we have to go through and try and line them up. Normally, we send them a snapshot. The other question I have is, when we do the study, are we taking input from the employees to make sure that the job descriptions that are currently in place accurately reflect the work that's being performed by the employees? Or do we feel that the work that's being performed has been changed or modified over the last eight years? Because I believe it's been that long since we've done that deep a dive into the job The job descriptions had moved to a heavily reliant upon degrees in education. And now we've started to slowly see them roll back to offset for experience, to offset that educational experience. So will we be addressing that in this study? So I agree, the study needs to be done in order to get it right. But I'm hopeful that we can come to a consensus that there's something in the short term that we can do to make us equal and competitive with the market around us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd?
I really think we need to do this in two parts. There's a lot of work to do, like was just said, to really look at all the positions and get them right. So I think we have to look at step one with relief to go a little quicker and some time to work on step two.
All right. So at this point, it sounds like you're going to bring some data back to us in two weeks for maybe a short-term solution? And then in the interim, you can begin having discussions with the union as far as how we're going to do the long-term approach?
Yes. We already have a template and an output that labor and management worked on before. I think we can look at that. I want to make it clear, we do not do every single position. What we do is we go into each grade and try to pick a like position that exists in similar cities so that we have a benchmark for that entire scale. And then that scale is set to the seventy-fifth percentile. So yes, into, I also see the directive in two manners. So the first one is to look at bringing our wage scale up to the fifteen dollars. I understand there's a request to explore what that may look like if we want to get ahead of that. So we will bring both of those sets of data within two weeks. And then also, within that same two weeks, we'll form a labor management committee. And that committee will review the scope of work and then ultimately issue a purchase order to the company that, or whoever we need to assist in developing all that data.
And you're going to bring fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen back as some data to show what that impact would be?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. We look forward to that information. Mr. Jones, appreciate you coming out. Everyone that came out today, thank you for being here. I think we're going to take a break until 11:00 AM.
Thank you.
(applause)
The order. Uh, next item of business is, uh, item, uh, four B two. Council-appointed boards and committees. Uh, I know we had somewhat of a, a discussion of this before, uh, so I brought it back for a follow-up item. I think, uh, the city manager has a short outline of what boards are mandatory by Florida statute or regulation, and which ones are not, so I'll let him, uh, open up the discussion to start with.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, what I've done is, I, I've worked with, uh, Matt. Matt did all the work, so I'm gonna ask Matt to come to the podium. Um, during the last discussion, there were, um, several comments and thoughts that were discussed on, you know, what boards are required by statute or to be in the, an independent authority outside of the council. Uh, there were some boards that were discretionary. We had, um, a discussion about term limits. We had a discussion about meeting frequency, the scope of the board, uh, the number of members on a board. You know, should there be eleven? Should there be five? Should there be four? Um, so Matt has, um, put together a couple of documents that were in your backup. Um, he tried to, to break out, um, those boards that are required to be independent, either by statute or by state or local code. Um, and then, from there, we created basically a blank template to help kind of guide the discussion, uh, with you all regarding each one of those discretionary boards, uh, on whether, you know, first of all, whether or not it, it's your will to sunset any of the boards. And then, if not, then from there, what do you wanna do with the term limits, the terms, um, the number of people on the board, the scope of work, uh, that they go through? And so I'll just give Matt a couple of minutes to, to summarize his work. And, um, I, I would ask Matt, if he could just address the health facilities board. I know there was some discussion, um, the, on whether or not that was actually discretionary or not. So when you kind of just summarize what you have before council, please address that item. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, well, good morning, City Council, Mr. Mayor, Matthew Rambo, Special Projects Coordinator. Uh, so there were two, uh, separate documents in your backup material for today's meeting. Uh, the first is an overview document that has, uh, all of the, uh, boards and committees that are currently, um, in the city's ordinances, um, including, uh, a column on the name of the board, commission or committee, uh, whether it's required. Uh, also, the enabling documents, the resolution or ordinances that establish the boards, uh, as well as the staff contacts, the members and liaisons, the number of regular members, number of alternates, term length, term limit, meeting frequency, and then also the overall purposes and goals of, uh, each of the board's committees and commissions. Uh, so that's kind of an overview of where we at, we are, where we are at currently. Um, I also, uh, put together, uh, what I'm calling the council worksheet. That is really an open template. The ones at the top on the first two pages of this worksheet are the, what, the boards and commissions that are discretionary. Uh, as the city manager had mentioned, uh, in particular, the health facilities authority. Um, I, I listed that under discretionary because per Florida statute, uh, a city council can, uh, dissolve, uh, that particular, uh, board, uh, once, uh, certain conditions are met. Um, after discussing, uh, some of the details of the situation with our current authority, I believe that if there's outstanding debt, you're, we're not, uh, enabled to, uh, dissolve that particular board. So it may, may be, uh, currently, uh, mandatory, not currently discretionary. Um, so, because, uh, we have, you know, several boards, committees and commissions that, that could be considered discretionary per, per city council. Um, th- there's a lot of more flexibility in those. Um, so the, the council worksheet has a, an overall yes, no on, on whether the council would be interested in sunsetting the board, uh, the number of regular members, number of alternative members, uh, the term length and term limits, meeting frequencies. And then, uh, the largest column is the purposes and goals, in case, uh, you wanted to provide, uh, staff with any, any guidance or insight into, uh, how you see, uh, the purposes and goals, uh, being modified, um, moving forward, if that's council's wish. Um, so, we were just hoping to provide council with a little bit of an overview, as well as an opportunity, um, to have some discussion on what you'd like to see with those discretionary boards that, uh, can be modified, uh, more than some of our mandatory boards and commissions are.
Okay. I think, uh, I think the easiest way to have the discussion, um, is we'll go through the boards that aren't mandatory, uh, by Florida statute or regulation. Uh, because we know we can't, we, we have to, uh, continue those particular boards. I think also during our conversation, do we want to apply these boards equally, uh, across the board? And when I say that, no matter which board it is, whether it's the mandatory boards or maybe boards that we wanna continue, do we wanna have the, uh, terms, uh, the term lengths and the term limits, uh, all equal? Um, when you look through the backup material, uh, we have boards, two years, three years, four years, uh, as far as when we appoint a particular individual. Do we wanna be consistent across the board, uh, with that? Um, do, uh, it looks like the term limits now are two terms, uh, pretty much across the board. Um, do we wanna continue that, two terms? Uh, if we decide to reduce maybe to two or three years, uh, consistently across the board, does that maybe mean you want three terms instead of two? Because if, if there are four years now and it's two terms, uh, and then we have some boards, that would be eight years. We have some boards that are three years, two terms, uh, that's only six years that they can serve. So do we wanna try to be fair and consistent across, across the board, uh, equally to all the boards? Uh, so, there are some of the questions I think we need to try to answer here today. And I figured, uh, we'll go down the list that, uh, staff provided that are pretty much open. I think the first thing that we should do on each one of these boards, uh, we should have a council liaison, uh, for each one of these boards that aren't mandatory. I think we'll give that individual an opportunity first, that maybe open the discussion, uh, and what their, uh, opinion or, or review of that particular board may be, and then we'll open it up to the rest of council for discussion. Uh, is that, uh, does that sound like a, a process to go through? Okay. All right. Uh, I guess the, uh, the first one on the, uh, as far as a discretionary board, uh, is the budget review committee. Uh, I think, uh, presently now, uh, if you look on our sheet, uh, the budget review committee, uh, I believe, see if I see it on my list here. It's not on my particular list. Let me look on the next.
On the sheet that has the summary of all.
Yeah, here we go.
Mayor is the liaison.
Yep, there's seven individuals, uh, on that board, uh, and, um, and there, you can do a three-year term, uh, and there's two terms. The other thing that I failed to mention that we may wanna discuss, as we know, all know, these boards basically serve at the pleasure of the council. And they're there to make a recommendation to us. One of the things that I had mentioned previously in a meeting, since they serve on the pleasure of the council, you know, is that something that we want to maybe implement, uh, those members, uh, in, in December, after the November election? Uh, and when I say that, of course, we're gonna have to alternate. So in other words, you're not gonna wanna have to put all seven people or five people on a board net, that December. My suggestion was in an earlier meeting that they were two-year terms. And, you know, and we would alternate back and forth. So you, if it's a five-member, you have three members you replace, one year, two, uh, two members the following year. So that's another discussion we could have. Uh, budget review is the first one, uh, on the list. I believe council member Steinkie is the liaison, uh, so we'll let him, uh, open up the discussion.
Okay, sure, thanks. I just, I, I had a quick question, and when I became liaison, I, I pulled the, the resolution and, and the ordinance and, and whatnot, and, for the life of me, I can't find anything that talks about term limits. Is there a universal term limit, uh, established somewhere else?
Well, just so you know, council member Steinkie, I believe, uh, city council, if I recall correctly, it was last year sometime, we, uh, brought forth, uh, I believe it was a, was it a resolution, Mr., city manager that talked about term limits? Uh, uh, we implemented, uh, no more than a two consecutive term limit for any board, just like we are held to that same standard. Uh, so that, that was probably a separate, uh, resolution that we implemented.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, so, but, and that was, uh, just, I wanted to try to find that, uh, because certainly one, wouldn't wanna affect all, uh, boards if that would, you know, conflict with another ordinance. But, uh, I think, I think a two-year term, uh, and having, uh, three terms available, that still accomplishes those six years for the people that do it, like it, uh, uh, you know, are, are good contributors to the committee. Uh, and so, uh, you know, if, if it was a, a wave of a wa- a magic wand for me, after the, uh, number of meetings that I've been to, uh, so far, I would, I would look to, uh, actually shorten the term to two years, uh, but then grant, uh, the opportunity for three terms, uh, so they have the same opportunity to serve. Uh, I think that, uh, the, uh, the purpose and goal of the committee, uh, I, I think has, um, kind of stretched, uh, beyond, uh, what their actual, um, involvement has stretched beyond what the intent of the, uh, committee was originally for. Um, you know, based on, on the ordinance and, uh, you know, discussions with a number of people, it's, it's to give a, uh, you know, a, seven additional perspectives to how the budget that's being proposed, uh, by the city manager's office lines up with our, uh, strategic plan, uh, and, and whether, uh, you know, we're paying attention to the things monetarily that, that we should be, uh, based on the direction of the city and circumstances that we have. Um, and I think that the committee has gotten, uh, more and more involved in, uh, operations on an annual basis, um, on a day-to-day basis of what's happening in each department and, uh, having people come and speak at meetings that, uh, by ordinance, uh, are, are supposed to be, uh, monthly. Um, and so to some degree, I think, uh, that, that work is, um, is sought, uh, to make relevance of an upcoming meeting, um, that's totally outside of the, of the, of the goal of, of that committee. So, I think there needs to be a verbiage change, uh, and, you know, in the ordinance, uh, 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 and, and I'm, on resolution, uh, five dash twelve, uh, uh, there's a summary under section nine of, uh, of five items, A through E, uh, and I think we kind of, uh, we s- set the stage in a way that, um, has, you know, led the committee down the path that it's on right now. And so, um, I would certainly, uh, look at, uh, uh, changing, uh, in, in section nine, where it says the responsibilities of budget review committee shall include, but not be limited to. Uh, by saying but not be limited to, then it basically just gives the opportunity for the committee to do, kind of whatever they wanna do. Uh, and I think that what was meant by that is what's expressed in, in E, and that is, address, um, other financial matters as requested by the city council. And so, um, um, I, you know, if we, if we were to give the committee direction to do something, I think they could do something outside of A through D. Uh, but, uh, but it's, you know, it's expanded, basically, because, uh, it's given unlimited, uh, scope, if you will, or self-directed scope. So, um, I, I would encourage us to look at the frequency of the meetings. Obviously, around, uh, budget review time, uh, they, they need, uh, amount of time to, uh, um, review what, uh, what's being presented, uh, um, you know, by finance and, and the budget that's being presented by the city manager's office. Um, and certainly be involved in the explanations around that. Uh, but then, you know, it's, it's kind of a seasonal committee, at least in my opinion, that they, they are, serve their purpose in reviewing and having citizens' eyes on, um, how the budget matches up with the strategic plan and the needs of the city and why. Um, and then, it, you know, not, not to use sunset in the term that we, we would use it, uh, today about actually eliminating a committee, but their activities would, would be, you know, greatly reduced, uh, if at all, um, after the budget's already approved and now we're waiting to go into the next year. So, that's, um, those are the things I would do. I think it's the right size. I think it's a committee we should have. But I would, uh, I would change the, uh, the number of years that someone serves, uh, to two, and, uh, but then expand it to three terms, if that doesn't upset the apple cart, uh, which how we've established term limits for all the committees. Uh, and then I would clean up, uh, the expectations of, of the committee there in section nine, uh, to, to reflect a, a much more, uh, you know, a much more dedicated, just to the budgetary process, um, rather than being involved as, uh, an oversight committee as far as how the budget is implemented over the, over the next year. I don't think that was their original, uh, the purpose of the committee.
Uh, Mr. City Manager, just so we all have a crystal-clear picture, tell us the, how the budget cycle typically works as far as, when does council get the proposed budget? And, I know we normally approve it in September, but we normally get, and I know it's, it's by charter, if I'm not mistaken, when are we supposed to get the, uh?
I believe it's the first regular meeting, uh, after July first. So you would have all, all of July, all of August, and some of September.
So I guess with that being said, uh, you know, because it's kind of tough to have a discussion if you don't have the budget, we won't even have the budget to the first, uh, meeting of July. So, I kind of see this as a ten-week at best, uh, committee, uh, with how you're explaining, July, August, and probably the first two weeks of September, because by then, we're approving the budget, and then we wouldn't need their services anymore until the following July, when that next proposed budget. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
Uh, uh, I, I think unless, uh.
Directed by council.
Yeah, unless a specific issue then comes up where, you know, a large financial decision needs to be made, and, you know, and obviously it affects the budget and, and the citizens, then we would call upon them to hold a meeting to review that particular situation.
Okay.
That's, that's what I would recommend.
Okay. All right, uh, council, uh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just wanna go back to the, uh, two-term limit. It's actually in section two sixty of the Code of Ordinances, and it.
Okay.
It, it states that all the boards, uh, have two-term limits, unless that particular board has a different. So it, it may say three or four.
Oh.
Okay. So it's, it's actually in the.
So it could be changed without, uh, having a universal effect?
It could be changed for each particular board, and then also, the council can override it by a two-thirds vote. So, even though it states two terms, somebody could be given a third term by a vote of.
Oh, I see, okay.
Of the council.
Council member Hayden?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really wanna drag out these conversations, 'cause I'm not sure any of it's broken. I'm gonna give a little different perspective on budget review, since I did it for two years and was on it for two years. Those early meetings were used to allow budget review to get information from different departments as they prepare to do their budgets. The more information the budget review about how certain departments operate is absolutely connected to the budgets and any recommendations that they might make. So for instance, I know the police chief was in, I think, the past budget review meeting to talk about needs that they might have moving forward and what they might want in next year's budget. So I think, you know, if the budget review committee has an opportunity to look at, um, needs from that department and what they're going to be entering into, the fact they're gonna be building a training facility, and budget review wants to make a recommendation that could, or could not match up with council's recommendation, I think their endorsement, a citizen's endorsement to what may be in that budget was important. I think that's one of the reasons they were established, to, uh, make recommendations for or against things that, uh, will come before council. So, I think the early meetings were used to prepare them to get ready for the budget by understanding how different departments work, um, how their budgets work. And because, pretty much every year, there's a, a member, a new member or two on budget review, uh, whether it's through, uh, uh, the regular cycle of term limits or whether it's through somebody drops off the board and an alternate drops off the board, so. Um, and budget review always has the opportunity to say, look, there's no reason for us to meet this month, 'cause we really don't have anything to talk about. But I think, you know, at least when I was on it, um, you know, we tried to use those early meetings as a way to help them get better informed of, uh, of each, of each department as, as, uh, new members came on, came on and off the board. I think the liaison's responsibility, as is the chair's responsibilities, if they get off track, if they start thinking, talking about things that don't deal with dollars and cents, then you d- direct them back. Yes, they do get in a lot of discussions that aren't in their purview, and, but, uh, you know, I think once they understood that, no, you know, you're supposed to be talking about the budget and what constitutes that budget in that particular department, if you have a recommendation there. Not that there aren't enough police officers on the streets doing traffic stops. Um, so, you know, which had come up before in their conversations. So, limiting them to a certain amount of meetings, um, I have a big problem with, knowing that the, uh, budget cycle even for us lasts all year long, because there's quarterly updates. Um, there's revenue adjustments, things that might become a topic for them to better understand how things work as they get into the, uh, meat of what they do in, um, July and August. So, quite frankly, I, I, I wouldn't recommend any changes to the budget review.
Okay, I guess I'll, uh, jump in here at this point. I guess I have a little different, uh, perspective, uh, than council member Hayden. You know, for me, uh, and I think I've been on the budget review board, uh, at least my first two years that I was in office, maybe even three, but at least two. Um, you know, so I, I have participated in that particular board, been participated in that board when I wasn't a, uh, a council liaison. Um, I think it's, uh, a board that definitely is working well outside, uh, of the established ordinance that we have now. Uh, I think a lot of times, uh, this particular board, uh, feels that it's almost a government oversight committee instead of a budget review committee. Budget review is just that budget, and, uh, I've said this many times, I even said it to council member Hayden, and if you're not talking dollars and cents, you probably shouldn't be talking about whatever, whatever you're talking about. And I will tell you, a majority of the time, uh, that is the case, that they're not talking dollars and cents. So I think if we are gonna continue this board, uh, that we make sure that they stay within the envelope that was established in, in the ordinance. Uh, and, uh, when you read the ordinance, I think it's fairly clear, except for that last sentence that you mentioned, council member Steinkie, uh, because then to me, that opens the door to anything. Um, so, I would agree with you, if we are gonna continue this particular board, uh, to make sure we make the appropriate changes in that, so they are well, uh, within the confines of the budget discussion. Uh, any other discussions outside of that, uh, would have to be approved by this council, by a majority vote, and direct them to do so, uh, and, or have that discussion. For me, the, at, at best, this board, uh, probably should only meet about ten weeks out of the year. To me, when you have the meetings with the, the, various, uh, you know, the police department and the, uh, fire department or public works, you know, I, I remember sitting in those meetings and they're talking about what type of asphalt they're using, uh, to put down, how long is it gonna last? Th- those type of discussions. Hey, to me, it's either you're putting six and a half million dollars, like we have each year, or we're putting less, or we're putting more, not the name brand of the asphalt that we're putting down. And, uh, too many times, I think they get into the weeds. Me personally, all the efforts and energy that we as staff put into the budget review board should be put between the eight of us. We are the ones making the one-point-one-million-dollar, uh, decision, I'm sorry, one-point-one-billion-dollar decision. Um, those efforts should be concentrated for us, the eight of us that have been elected to make the decision for our constituents. If you look at the amount of time that we put towards the budget review board, compared to the amount of time that we as a council and staff, to inform us, to make a good informed decision in the budget, uh, I just don't understand that personally. I just don't. Um, so, all the efforts that, you know, I think that during budget cycle, I've been here five years now. Uh, council member Cosin's been here longer than me. I think every single department and some type of a committee, a whole or a budget meeting, uh, just like the county does. Their, their departments come before the Board of County Commissioners, and so, this is what we need, this is why we need it, uh, this is the direction we're going in, here's our five-year plan. We don't hear that, and we should. So for me personally, uh, the budget review committee, I think, at best, is a very, uh, gives the opportunity for the community to provide, uh, input to private sector. But if you look back on the input that they've given, five years I've been here, nine times out of ten, we don't go in the direction that they're, that they recommend. We go in our own direction, which we should. We're the ones making the decision. So, for me, uh, I could go either way on the budget review committee, but if we are gonna have it, uh, it has to stay within the confines of the ordinance that was, uh, that was established. Uh, like for me, I, I think just about any one of these boards could be a stakeholders group. Uh, I know, uh, that's a little different than, than a actual board or committee, but, um, you know, that would give them the opportunity to weigh in on whatever that budget is. They could get it the same time we get it the first week of July, go through it, have their discussions. You know, for me, it's, uh, more important for us as a council to hear from our department directors, our police chief or fire chief on why we need something, more so than trying to, trying to, uh, convince a budget review committee who is in appointed, uh, position and not in elected of position. So, that's where I'm at on majority of these boards. Uh, but like I said, for me personally, uh, I think that, uh, more time needs to be concentrated towards this council, uh, during the budgets, uh, process. All of the boards, I agree, uh, for, like council member Steinkie said, two-year terms. Uh, I'm okay with three consecutive terms. Uh, I do believe that the terms should begin in December, uh, because council gets elected typically in November. So, since these positions serve at the pleasure of the council, why should we, eight of us, make a decision for four years where next year, there's gonna be a council change? Those council members may want someone different. So, I would, uh, I would say that all of our boards are two years, three, uh, consecutive terms, uh, start in December. Uh, in order to implement this, if, if this is the direction that we would go in, we would have to reestablish all of our boards this coming December. Would pick staggering terms, if it's a five-member board, a three and a two. Uh, three people, two people, for a one-year, two-year, that's the only way we're gonna be able to implement this, uh, methodology. If that's how. if that's how we're gonna move forward. So, that's where I'm at. I'm gonna give everybody one opportunity before I come back to some of this lights on other people that's already spoken. Council member Paul, and I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'll preface this by saying, 'cause a lot of my opinions are gonna be the same regardless of the board, that I appreciate the citizens that get involved in these. I certainly respect their desire to get involved and volunteer their time and effort. But a lot of the decisions that I make up here are value-add basis. So, when you think about, and I appreciate Mr. Granville for bringing us a lot of his data points, but the one to me that we don't have that would be helpful, and admittedly, you can't quantify it, is the amount of time and effort that our staff puts into these boards and committees. I've only been here for two years, but the boards that I've been liaison on, just the time that I've committed just to sit in the meetings is, in some instances, a significant amount. And so, we've got staff that also is sitting in those meetings, on top of the fact that they've made preparations for those meetings and looked into those things. And so, I'm not picking on the budget review committee. A lot of what I'm saying here is applicable universally across these boards. But like, just to kind of bring it home, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into this particular board. And a lot of times, like the mayor said, I've only been here for two years. The last two years that we've made decisions, they've been in opposition of the budget review committee's recommendations at the end of the day. And so, all the time, effort, and everything that went into that, not that it wasn't necessarily warranted or appreciated, but to get to the root of it, we're gonna be the ones making the decisions and the determinations based on our own opinions and our own data. I only speak for myself, but I'm not sitting here reading through the minutes and parsing through every tidbit of their discussions that they have in their meetings. I'm gonna look at the bottom line, I'm gonna, if I wanna look a little further into a point or two that's made, I will. But, and this goes across the board, I'm gonna look at my own data, I'm gonna look at it for myself, I'm gonna make my own determinations and decisions. So, for me, at a bare minimum, if there's a consensus here to keep it, it would need to be limited in scope to limit the amount of time and effort and hours that staff spends. Because again, the time that they're spending there, they're also having to spend with us again. So, a lot of the efforts are duplicated, and so, it's a resource-driven discussion for me with regards to the value that we get out of it versus what we put into it as an organization. So, yeah, at best, and again, I'm not picking on the budget review committee. I'm gonna more or less say the same thing for just about every one of these. I could certainly do without it, for me, but if there's a consensus that we keep it, certainly, I would be in strong favor of limiting the scope to what's already been suggested. Thank you.
Council member Cummings.
Yeah, thank you. My question is, we have a finance department, right? And how many people do we have in the finance department, Mark?
Mark Mason, Financial Services Director, 102 overall in financial services within the accounting-budget group. I have six in budget, and then I have others in accounting, et cetera, in purchasing.
And you pretty much work with council when we have questions, and if we need to look at something, we can bring it to you.
Correct.
And our interim city manager, I know we've talked to you about projects that we're looking at doing, and we asked, can we bring this into the budget, correct?
That is correct.
So, my question is, is do we really need the budget committee when we have a big finance department that we work closely with, and as one of you has stated, we were voted in to represent our districts with the people and to look at these projects that we wanna move forward? We come to you and talk to you and ask if this could be done, and then we come back to a committee of a whole meeting, and we talk about it as a whole, and then we make our decisions. So, there's a lot of these committees and boards I'm in agreement with, that are they really needed? And it does take time away from Mark and many of the staff, because they are working a lot of hours. And then now, you gotta sit through and hear some of the things that they really don't understand that may not be good or could be good, and it comes back to us. I'm for, if you wanna reduce it to the 10-week program, I'm for that. I'm also for, if we need to remove it, we can also remove it. I feel we have a finance department, and we have a relationship with our finance team, and I think it would be a lot easier on council and the mayor that we just work together on our budget. So, thank you.
Council member Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, since we're going like on the everything level, picking them in December, I believe is a good idea. I think we probably maybe could just schedule a meeting just for that, because I know we do a lot of interviews with the candidates, and a lot of times, that takes up a good 30 minutes before we get to the meat and potatoes of other regular meetings. So, if we wanna pick a day in December where we add a meeting specifically for boards so that we can have that time to review all the applicants, is something I would be in support of. I am still in support of the two-term limit, because that is the term limit that we set as council as well. So, I would also be in support of a two-year term, so two and two, not two and three, and increasing to a third. Like the city attorney, deputy city attorney said, there are stipulations in the mayor, if we have an outstanding candidate, or we have a lack of citizens that want to participate, we as a council can approve someone for a third term if we want. So, I think putting the two-year, two-term length on every board, I think is fine. Having them alter each year so we're not replacing the entire board, I think is a good idea. And doing it on a special meeting in December specifically for the boards is something I would support as well. When it comes to the budget review committee, meeting yearly, I think we could probably let them start in June, because that does give city employees time to integrate with the new budget review committee members. It lets them kind of catch up on someone who might be new, and then it ending in November, obviously, when the budget's adopted. So, I don't think it needs to be a year-round board, but I do like, I don't think the 10-week period is enough, 'cause we get everything, and we get our answers year-round when we're here. So, I think giving them that extra month before the budget comes out to kind of, to learn. I learned a lot the first year being a council member that I didn't know as a citizen. So, asking a citizen to come in and just pick up right in the heart of it. I think I would be supportive of giving them a month in advance to hold meetings. So, I think I kind of touched base on the overall where I'm at. I know we're gonna go through each of these individually, and that's it. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, when do we approve the millage? 'Cause by then, we're typically done the budget.
I'm gonna have Mark come to the podium. I believe it's in the September budget hearings. But I do wanna say earlier, when you had asked, "When is the CM's proposed budget?", I said I thought it was the first meeting after July. It's actually the first meeting after August in the charter.
Okay.
However, a couple of things. Let me answer the first question first. We set the tentative millage rate prior to August 1st, as prior, before it goes out for, through the trim notice. We'll be submitting the proposed budget, I believe, in the third week in July. And so, they'll, and, which is actually normal and has been that way in Cape Coral for a long time. But it's usually, that's about the time that we normally submit it. We have our workshops in August, and then, you know, that sets the tone for the first budget hearing in, first of two hearings in September where we set the millage rate and actually establish the millage rate at the final time. But we have to set a tentative millage rate in July.
And we approve the millage rate, I know, in September's?
Correct.
Okay.
That's when you adopt the millage rate by ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the charter language gives the maximum deadline, which should be released, but after the July 1 numbers, then it typically comes out.
Okay. All right. Council member Shepard.
I'm for eliminating just about all of them, all the boards. I think we're the random citizen, and we're the board. We all come from different parts of the city, and we were all footyear by the citizens to make them decisions. And that's my feelings on that. And I also look at the business side of it. We talked earlier today about increases in cost to run this business and to operate it. And one of the things you have to do when you have a business, when you're dealing with cost, is streamline. How do we make our money go farther, and how do we get more return on our investment? As the mayor said, the time that staff is spending with these different boards, I'd rather that time be spent with us. To me, that's using that money more wisely. And we are the random citizens that were chosen. So, I look at us as we're the random people for all the boards, chosen by the people. So, I think all these boards do is just add an extra step, clog up the system, use valuable time up of staff, and, you know, I'd rather that time go to educating all of us individually so that we can make the right decisions. And I think that would be using the taxpayers' money more wisely. Thank you.
Council member Stiney.
Thank you. I, for one, love data and I love perspective. And I know that we're here, and there's eight of us, and that's the opportunity for eight perspectives. I also feel that it's a good idea to have citizens' involvement, and so, and I agree that we can't, you know, overutilize staff. And so, I think there can be a concentrated effort to accomplish all of that. I absolutely agree with council member Hayden that we need the meetings. The budget review committee, if one exists, they need the meetings prior to, to be prepared. But in those same meetings, and he referenced our chief of police, he did a fabulous presentation Monday, fabulous. It had nothing to do with budget, and it had everything to do with what we ought to know. And so, this will be my first budget cycle that I experience, since I'm new to the council. But what I would tend to envision is when those departments make the presentations around what they need and whatnot, it should be in front of council, and the budget review committee members should be in that meeting. That way, the staff makes the presentation one time, all the people hear it, that need to hear it. And then that, the budget review committee can then have their meetings to discuss what they heard, how it lines up in the budget, how, you know, all the gears fit together, 'cause it certainly is a multifaceted, you know, process. And so, I believe we should give the citizens an opportunity to comment and bring a perspective that the eight of us may not see. I do think that then leads to proper selection of the members of that committee, that they're from different walks of life and, you know, the acumen to, you know, to give good feedback and contribution there. And one of the things was, you know, it was a learning curve for me, and so, it's a little bit of a concern around the appointing them in December. You know, before, I would say yes to this person or that person. If they're an incumbent, it'd be kind of good to see them in action, if you will, before I make a decision around replacing them or not replacing them with the people that are, you know, applying for the role. It was helpful for me to actually sit in on one of the meetings before, you know, before making, you know, a decision on who should be what. So, that's all I would say, is I think that it's a good idea to get some citizens' input. But I think that the time that's taken by staff, the staff should be giving that time to us so that we understand, 'cause we're gonna make the decisions, and it would then be incumbent upon the members of the committee to be at that meeting so that they can have their meetings to, you know, review and have their recommendations back to council. And that is where the recommendations should come, and where their feedback should come is back to council, not back to staff. They don't interact with staff, they interact with council, and that's what the ordinance says.
Thank you. Council member Hayden.
Hard to know where to start. Number one, the committees and boards were established to allow citizens to have a better connection with their government. One of the things we all heard when we ran for office was that they feel isolated. They don't feel that connection. They feel that separation from government. They don't know what's going on. The committees were established to not only allow them to have a part and play a role in the decision-making process and making recommendations, but to also better understand how government works. It's ludicrous to me to hear comments that we should eliminate all this because we don't want input from citizens. That is crazy. What we do, more than anything, is take input from citizens, which helps us better make decisions on policy. I value every single one of these committees because of the input that they offer. Yeah, we can get upset about how they handle their meetings and what might be said, but it's up to us to direct them back on track and get them back on the agenda. That's why they have liaisons. That's why we're in the room, to help them direct and get through their meetings in an efficient way. If we don't do that, then we failed. We failed in our jobs. Everything you said about budget review, I can make a case for every single one of these committees. Why do we need water advisory board? You know, we have plenty of people that deal with water in our government. Why do we need parks and rec board? We have plenty of people in our parks and rec department. You can go on down the line and say, but, you know, they're created to allow citizens to be part of a process that impacts their daily lives pretty much every day. So, you can go down and you can make changes and you can eliminate this, but eliminating the ability for citizens to have input goes against my grain, goes against my fabric, goes against our community's fabric and what we're trying to bring to local government. If we start isolating ourselves, that we're the only citizens that should be making decisions that matter without input from our citizens, then we are doing a disgrace to our community, and that is absolutely wrong. As far as putting all these committees grouped in one thing in December, we can't do that. Transportation Advisory Committee, which is one that is made up of council, you know, that's set usually in November. It doesn't change out every two years. It changes out every year, most of the time. You can't do that with youth council, which may change its role anyway, but they change out every two years anyway, just because of kids graduating. And the board is established in May. So, you can't group everybody together all the way down the line. So, there is gonna have to be individual settings of committees based on that. You can take a majority of them and set terms and do all that. You start setting terms wherever we pick everybody in December, that's gonna be difficult 'cause we gotta stagger the terms. So, some people are gonna have to continue on anyway. You can't be picking all new boards on that day. That'll be a process that will be very difficult, I think, for us to manage. So, for those of you that think that it's right to eliminate these boards, please rethink that position, because if we take citizens away from this process, we are truly, truly doing a disservice. And I'm not gonna change my feelings on budget review. Sometimes discussions, I'll relate back to, can relate back to the budget moving forward to bring them in late. We've had this problem before where they didn't feel like they were informed enough to even make recommendations. We had that problem two years ago where they got the budget late. So, to bring them in, and, you know, during the June retreats are usually part of the process. It's a joint budget review committee, city council retreat typically, besides the workshops that take place. And as I think back to their recommendations last year... And as I think back to their recommendations last year, they were almost split on the budget. Some wanting to keep the mill the same, some wanting to reduce it. And I think their other recommendations were in line with what council wanted to recommend anyway. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Law.
Yeah, just real briefly to follow up, in case it wasn't clear when I, when I first stated it. My arguments were universally applicable. They weren't intended to just discuss the Budget Review Committee and its relevancy or value that that's added. That same argument, from my perspective, could be applied to every one of these. In particular, which we'll get to, the Waterway Advisory Board. And then also just to address the, the community input or the provide input. The whole purpose of this is we have infinite opportunities for the public to provide input, as is evidenced in my email every day when I look at it. We have public input sessions at the beginning of every one of our meetings in public and all of our agenda items are put out well in advance when we see it, almost as when they see it. So in any one of these, these budget meetings that, in some alternate world, we had with the absence of the Budget Review Committee, every one of those individuals or any other member of the public has provided an opportunity to review the same materials that we are, to participate at the beginning of the meeting with providing their input. And then if, to play that out further, if they provided input that we deemed valuable or a question that we wanted to follow up on, the process would play out in the same manner. We would latch on to that question or idea, we would ask that of staff. And at that point in time, staff would have the opportunity to look into that, to address it, and we could all discuss it collectively. So I just want to be clear that this idea that we're muting our citizens if we do anything with any of these boards, to me, is completely erroneous because we provide public input and are very transparent, in my opinion, in everything we do. If you want to give these citizens, and they should, an opportunity to be involved in our government, we also have opportunities for that. We have the Citizens Academy. We have various things that we do that involve our citizens. So I do take exception a little bit with the fact that it, in the event that any of these get removed or altered in a way that we would be in some sense taking away our citizens' opportunity to provide input, I think that's categorically false. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be very brief. As far as the Budget Review Committee, I think, I think it's important to, for citizen involvement. I think it's important. I do think we spend too much time, or they spend too much time, in operation throughout the year, so I'd like to cut that back. I think December appointments make a lot of sense. And I would want to stick with two-year terms, not three-year terms. I'm sorry, two, two-year terms. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Shepherd.
To Councilman Hayden, I am not for excluding the citizens. My phone works and my email works. And on every topic that ever comes before us, I get emails from citizens and I call them back and return information to them that they need. So I'm not excluding citizens at all. What I'm saying is, even though I'm not on the Budget Committee or the liaison for it, I'm on the Budget Committee all year long. And all year long, citizens can communicate with me and ask me any kind of information they need. And when I don't know the answers, I can go to staff and get the answer and I can relay the answer. And like our other council member has said, we also have weekly meetings where they can come here and go to that podium and ask us any, for any information or questions they might have. What I'm saying is, we're paying for an extra step. It's an extra cost to our corporation, to our business. If you were a small business, you would eliminate a step that is just a repeat. And we actually do a better job because citizens aren't emailing and calling the people on that committee with questions and relaying information and expressing their feelings. But they do that to us. So I'd rather all the education from staff and all the time that they have to spare be given to us because we're the ones working and relating to the citizens every day. And like I said, we're the random citizens. Just like random citizens are on these boards, we're random citizens. But even greater is the random citizens on the board, we're picked by eight. The random citizens sitting up here, we're picked by 200,000. So when I look at it as a business decision, I want to invest in the eight. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummins.
Yeah. As far as public input, Councilmember Hayden, I do take offense to that because I'm out there always talking to the public. My phone does ring off the hook. One thing I asked to be brought back, and that's what they're doing, is called town hall meetings. And I think it'd be good for you to start putting a town hall meeting in your district. If you feel like, if, if the citizens aren't listening, then maybe engage more. They voted us in, not the boards or the committees. We're here to work with them. I, I'm not just for the budget, I'm for quite a few of them here. You know, when a topic's coming up in your district and you have this board or committee talking about it, it's double the work for you as, as a council member to, to go back and say, no, these, these topics are not true because these things were left out. There was confusion. These confusions should not be happening. We work directly with our city manager. Our city manager works directly with staff. So if we have questions, we go to our city manager and he gives us the answers. And then we then go to the citizens, the residents of Cape Coral, and answer the questions for them. We shouldn't have a middleman. That's not why we were voted in. We were voted in to get rid of the middleman and to work directly with the citizens. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just one more quick thing. I believe that these committees might have been used in the past to take pressure off council people. I believe that if everyone sitting up here is doing their job, then there is transparency. If, if we have to make a committee to say, oh, that's transparency, then that means the council's not doing their job. So if we have a group of people in a certain part of the city that think there's no transparency, then maybe a council member needs to get out there and do, then do more events and speak more to the people. But, you know, I just, I just believe it's, it's a feel-good. Let's create these committees to feel good. Well, in business, feel-good doesn't pay the bills.
Okay, before we go down the line and see if we want to keep the board or not, just wanted to throw something else out there during this discussion I kind of thought of, which I, for me personally, I think it's a great opportunity for the community. You know, we have seven people on the Budget Review Board. And the information typically isn't disseminated outside of that room, whether it's staff, council liaison, city manager, whoever goes to that particular meeting. I think I would prefer to have a town hall presentation once a year. That way, in this room, anyone from the community can come and either listen or they can watch it from home. That way, I think we're going to get more of that message out than we are the seven people sitting in those chairs. And that would give the community the opportunity to listen. And then if they want to have any type of feedback or comment, then they can write any of us, or all of us, for that matter. So to me, with that type of an approach, I think we would get more information out to the public so they have that information. So that's kind of what I was thinking during this, when somebody mentioned town hall. That's the first thing I thought of. But with that being said, you know, I'll open it up for any other discussion or maybe we'll start with Councilmember Cosden and just go down the list for pertaining to the budget review. I think we heard your comment earlier, but we'll just go down the list.
Just a yes or a no, right?
Yes or no, and I think we already heard your two-year terms and two terms.
Yes.
Okay.
And we're saying yes or no to keeping it or eliminating it?
Keeping it.
Keeping it. Without a firm commitment to do the budget presentation in a town hall format, without that already being a given, then I would say yes, keep the committee. And I'm in favor of two and three.
Councilmember Shepherd.
I would like to sunset it, be more transparent with educating the public as well as council. And if we did not decide to go that route, two and two.
Yeah, for me, two and two, I kind of like Councilmember Welsh's suggestion. So that'll be my answer for all the boards, if we keep them. And for the Budget Review Committee, I would vote no not to have the board, but to provide a town hall presentation to the community as a whole so they are more engaged and to try to get some of the factual information regarding a budget out to them. So that would be my recommendation.
Well, if you schedule a town hall, it's just another city council meeting. Because if we're all going to be here to follow sunshine, it's got to be a scheduled public meeting, so.
Staff can give that town hall meeting.
Well, but if, if we're all here, again, it's got to be held under sunshine. So, you know, I've always encouraged individual council members to have their own town halls, as I have done. So, but as far as budget review, yes. And two and, two and three.
I'm saying yes, keep Budget Review Committee. And I'm sticking with the two and two that I've mentioned earlier for all the boards.
No to the Budget Review Committee. And I'm in agreement with bringing a town hall meeting in place of the Budget Review Committee and two and two.
Yeah, I would vote to sunset the Budget Review Committee as well and provide the members of public an opportunity in the annual forum, similar to what's been suggested.
I think Tom was, Councilmember Shepherd asked to clarify your response.
Yes, two and three?
Yes, two and three.
On the town hall?
No, to clarify his comment about, about what we're allowed to do and not allowed to do.
Well, I mean, the town hall meeting, staff can make that presentation. City council doesn't have to be there. It's just an opportunity to relay that information to the public. I'm not saying we do that in a council meeting. I'm just saying that.
Tom was saying you're violating something.
Well, if we're not here.
Well, if we're doing the meeting, it wasn't clarified.
Right. 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 All right, so it sounds like we're four and four. I think the only other really discussion would be the town hall concept. If, I think you had had a question regarding if we went in that direction, would that change your mind at all?
Oh, if there, if there was a guarantee of doing that, then I don't see that there's a need for the committee. So I didn't know that we had a definite, we can do it that way instead. If we have a definite, we can do it that way and will do it that way instead, then I would be okay with sunsetting the committee.
Mr. Deputy City Attorney, we can craft a resolution to basically, if we're going to sunset that particular board and put in there that staff or we have.
Certain month that there would be a town hall meeting.
Exactly.
By staff, not council.
Right.
Certain month.
Yeah. Is, what, I haven't heard your feedback, Mr. City Manager, on that idea.
Well, here's my feedback. You're split four-four, with the exception of a possible elimination of the board.
Yeah. Councilmember Stanky might have a different opinion.
Right now, I have staff members presenting before the Budget Review Committee. And so the town hall would just be a replacement of that meeting. But if I look at all the other backend and frontend things that go into hosting a board, I have recording secretaries that need to create agendas, there's minutes that need to be taken, there's staff sitting in attendance, and that is replicated 10 or 12 times a year. So if you're asking me if I could commit to having a town hall meeting where I have the same staff present in a public forum as opposed to in a, a meeting open to the sunshine, yes, we, we will do that. What, what that will eliminate for us is the need of, of all the recording secretaries or the minutes, you know, month over month over month. And we just replace it with one event.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the final point. I was just going to say, because it's not necessarily an even exchange with regards to staff doing the same work, whether it's for the Budget Review or the Town Hall, because the way that it currently works, the staff does this, that work multiple times during the course of the year. And if what we're proposing here, they would only have to do that once. So it's not just the secretaries and the minutes. It would be the multiple duplicated events of staff going back and back and back to those meetings as they're held on, I believe, a monthly basis. And would be reducing it to one individual meeting.
The only question I would have for council is, would you want that?
The discussion was around having the committee meet in and around the CM's proposed budget for those 10 weeks heading into the vote. You would like, I presume then, this town hall meeting would be on the CM's proposed budget, out in the public on what's in there. So it would allow not just eight members, but the entire community to have information on the budget.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, when we came at this, it was a yes or a no, not a, how about we do something different? And so it's turned into a, how about we do something different? And I am in favor of doing it the different way that's been proposed.
Okay. Any other, any discussion on that particular board? All right, get that, get the direction you need there on, on that particular board?
Yeah, so what, what we would like, what Matt and I are going to do. So in a situation like this, we won't need to discuss term lengths, term limits, meeting frequency. It will be recorded down as a sunset yes, so all those become NA. And then what's going to happen, when we finish this, we'll work with the attorney's office to, to basically bring back a, an ordinance or a resolu, an ordinance to basically enact council's wish.
I believe some of these boards were established by ordinance. Others were established by resolution, so.
We'll figure it out.
We'll have to look at each one.
Right. Okay. All right, Cape Competes, let's talk about that real quick, I think. Cape Competes, Mr. City Manager, I know you and I had a discussion on Cape Competes. What was your recommendation on this particular board?
Yeah, in, in speaking with our economic development business manager and staff that attends this meetings, my understanding is that this board would be better suited as a stakeholder group because some of the things that they discuss in there, they're, they're business-related. And so it ends up working against them to be in the sunshine. If they were a stakeholder group, they could have open and free discussions and present more information.
Okay.
So our, our recommendation there would be not to sunset, sunset the board, but then my office would just utilize those same members as a stakeholder committee so that we can continue to have them evaluate proposals under the, under the ordinance. This one was definitely created by ordinance.
Okay. All right. I guess we'll start with Councilmember Cosden again and just go down the list. Do you agree with the city manager's recommendation?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So you're saying we would eliminate the board and be stakeholders, do we still get to?
Same people, same.
Yeah, but do we vote on which stakeholders are there then? Yeah, I think what we would do is we would go into the ordinance and eliminate it from being a formal board. And it would be, it would be a city manager stakeholder group that would do basically the same, the output. It just wouldn't be a, a committee under the sunshine. It would be, we'd still have the meetings and still have the people come in and review what's there.
But council would not select the members, okay? It would, it would be staff. Because that stakeholders, it's staff that determines who is that particular.
Yeah, so for that reason, I, I'm going to say no, just because, yeah, no.
Okay.
I think, I think it's important that we get to choose who's on that board because they're making recommendations.
Well, would they continue to make recommendations?
No, they would not continue to make recommendations. They cannot make recommendations.
They would make recommendations to administration.
Yeah, but they could come at, at public input. They could come to public. As a representative of a stakeholders group and say. It's not an advisory or a recommending board if it's a stakeholder. It's a fact-finding board for staff.
Yeah, for that reason, I don't want to sunset it. But I do agree that the board is, it's in its.
it's in its infancy, and I think there's a lot of good that's come out of it. You know, I've spoken to a couple of the members on the board, and they've, they've gotten the presentations, and they give recommendations back to the city, and yes, that would be fine as a stakeholder group, but I think having a little bit of oversight on who's in that, on that board is something I don't wanna give up. So, no, thank you.
I would say yes, just in, in short. I mean, I think it's, the discussion went in a different way than I would have, have done it, but, because it sounds to me like we're still gonna be spending the same amount of time and resources, but just shuttering the, the membership and, and opening it up, which is fine. But for me, the board, when it was originally presented to us, was sort of a package deal with some other things that we had, that we were pushing forward with regards to incentivizing businesses. At least my understanding, as it was presented at that point in time, that it would be directly tied to that. Now come to my attention through my involvement as the liaison, that it's not at all. And so, in that sense, sure, it's, it is a stakeholders group. But we also have individual organizations that fill that void, and by way of the local chamber, for example, and those sorts of things. So yeah, in any event, if we're just trading like for like and getting rid of the board aspect of it, sure. Then yeah, I would, I would agree to do that.
Just to, so on that one, I think it's a similar situation with the Youth Council. So it was created as a board under the sunshine, and it has, it has a lot of restrictions and requires a lot of frontend and backend. My intent here would be to create an advisory board, you know, stakeholders group, and see how that goes.
Sure.
And if it ends up, what would happen then, if it ends up we don't need it, then we just.
It wouldn't be an advisory board, it'd have to be a stakeholders group.
Correct.
Okay, sounds like staff got the direction with that. We'll move on to Youth Council, I'll give Councilmember Hayden the opportunity, I know.
Yeah, we're in the process of changing that one out of being an advisory board to being a ambassador-type group where they can still meet, still come to council meetings if they wish and make suggestions individually. So I'll keep council updated on the progress. Brian, I'm not sure where we're at on that one, but.
In two-year terms there, because, just because of the.
Correct, because of the, yeah.
So I think that one's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Transportation Advisory Committee, I think we pretty much leave that one alone, you know, the way it is, unless someone else has any recommendations. Alright, let's move on to the Golf Course Advisory Board. Councilmember Hayden, you still the liaison?
Yeah, I, I think my opinion might have been different when they were working for a golf course that was in the special revenue fund or, but now that they're back in the general fund, I thought that that particular committee could lend some, could make some recommendations since it's, it's coming out of the, out of the budget, as they did with the golf, golf, golf paths. But, you know, based on our discussion, at least with the way the consensus is, you know, that this would not meet your criteria of, it meets mine, but it doesn't sound like it's gonna meet your criteria for wanting to continue them. I think, you know, they basically meet, well, once every couple of months, and.
Yeah, once a quarter.
Yeah, once a quarter, so, you know, they, they could, I mean, I would like to see them continue. They could continue as a stakeholder group as well, based on the consensus of this council. So, I mean, we're pretty much gonna be in line with that all the way down the rest of these, so. Doesn't do me any good to make a case for keeping them, although I think they can make important recommendations based on, based on the way this coun, the council's direction's been going.
Yeah, the only thing I'll mention about this one, I did meet with the chairperson of the Golf Course Advisory Board, three, four months ago, I guess it was. And it was his recommendation that, that he didn't feel the board was needed any longer. So I know he had a change of heart a year, year and a half ago. He, he was wholeheartedly involved, said that we need to have it. But when I met with him about three to four months ago, he had a different.
That might have been right before they made a change into the general revenue fund, from being in the special revenue fund, so.
So with that, you know, my vote would be no. Councilmember Cosden, you wanna start again?
Basically what you just said, I think it, it needs to go.
Sunset?
Sunset.
Sunset.
Keep them.
So, we're yes or no on keeping the board?
Yeah, the golf.
I think we can eliminate that board.
Sunset.
Sunset.
Okay, sounds like we got that clarity. We'll move on, Health Facilities Authority, because there are some outstanding bonds, I think that one has to stay the way it is. Nuisance Abatement Board, you know, the discussion that I've had with the police chief, I don't see him here, but I'll let the City Manager talk on his behalf.
This board is never met, both the police chief and I are recommending that. And we were about to appoint members to it, and we actually pulled it from the agenda. So we're recommending that this is sunset as well.
Okay. Councilmember Cosden, you wanna start? This is the Nuisance Abatement Board.
Thank you, I agree with what the City Manager just said.
Sunset?
Sunset.
Sunset?
Sunset.
Sunset.
Okay, we'll move on to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I believe Councilmember Welsh, you still the liaison?
No, Cummings.
No, it's actually Councilwoman.
Councilmember Cummings, okay, I'll turn the, turn it over to you first.
So, this one was a tough one, because I am, I, I love working with our Parks and Recreations. But I did get with the team of Parks and Recreations and asked them how they felt about keeping the board, if they felt like it made it more difficult for them for things that they were working on, and it created more of a delay or havoc. And, and, and in response, talking to each one individually, they felt like this should be sunsetted as well.
Okay, Councilmember Welsh?
Yeah, I'm, I've had this board for a year, and Councilwoman Cummings has had one meeting, so. I think there's a lot where this board can still go. I think they've only been around for a year. I think what the board is currently getting is just basically presentations that they're bringing to us a week later at council meetings. So, looking at the way the board's been running, I do agree that what, what Parks and Rec staff has brought to the board isn't quite where I wanted it to be. So, before we set this board, if Councilwoman Cummings would like to give it back to me as an advisor, I'd like to continue to work on it for at least another year to get and work with the new Parks Director that we have, to actually get the input that I was hoping that we would get with this board. So, for me, it's a no, and I'd be willing to try to recraft it in the upcoming year.
And to clarify, you would be a yes to keep it?
Yes, to keep it.
Yeah, because you said.
No to sunset.
No to sunset, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Alright. Alright, I guess we'll do the same thing here. I personally think this would be a great stakeholders group, again, very similar to the CAPE competes. Right now, you know, we, we still have, I think, the Yacht Club discussion that we're gonna have that would be a good opportunity maybe for a stakeholders group to have input. J.C. Park, if we decide to go some direction there. So I think it's, it would be a, a good fit for a stakeholders group myself. But we'll start up there with Councilmember Cosden, and, and yes or no, or keep it as is? Stakeholders group or no to sunset it?
Can I say stakeholders group or keep it as is?
Yeah.
Just a question, if it were a stakeholders group, who would be chosen? Because now we have staff that have to choose the stakeholder group. What, what type of a mix do you see that you would select people from to make sure that the advice given or the input given is, if you will, all-encompassing? Because there's a lot of answers that are really, really easy to give if you give total disrespect to anything else that's involved. And when you think about our city, it'd be really easy to make decisions in a vacuum, but we don't have that luxury. And so, when the stakeholders are chosen, how privy will they be to all of the other things that have to be considered to base their input?
And also, with that question, if I may, hopefully we could get an answer. How come we can't put in an ordinance that council picks the stakeholders group? I don't understand that.
You can, routinely though, it's always been, like the irrigation ordinance, you didn't have any, they have a stakeholders group.
But we, we do have that opportunity?
Input in there, you didn't, you know, basically just went out and got.
Because I think that's what some of us are struggling with.
So it could be an ad hoc committee?
It, it could be, it could be appointed by council, but it specifically, it's not an advisory or recommending. They cannot recommend anything to council. It's a fact, what, ad hoc, fact-finding, and they say, here's all the facts. Stop there, you know, and let you guys know.
And they deliver those facts to the City Manager?
It could be written either way. I mean, they normally go to the City Manager or the Director who's working on an ordinance, or whatever the issue might be.
A stakeholders group for the City Manager's Office is, is how we ensure that we're doing what you all do with your boards and commissions. So for example, when we last tried to adjust the Short Term Rental Ordinance, the City Manager's Office converted a stakeholders committee. That included the Legislative Policy Director for Royal Palm Coast Realtors Association. It included the Legislative Policy Director for Airbnb, VRBO. It included the President of the Northwest Neighborhood Association. It included a Realtor. It included a citizen, a random citizen. And what we tried to do is grab a broad perspective in the community. Anything that council appoints or directs, we won't, we're not gonna call that a stakeholders group. Right, we, even, so if, if I, I'm, if, if I'm being directed to have a stakeholder group with specific members, administration is gonna, is gonna, we're gonna call that something else.
Yeah, so, I think, at least, I can only speak for myself on council. What you just described sounds perfect. What I would hope is, is that, is that we could have some input on, hey, what sectors are we choosing these people from? To make sure that we have the perspectives that are needed instead of people that would, in a sense, be biased to one way or, or the other. So that, that's the thing, you know, I, I would agree, it's been said before, that many of these could just be stakeholder groups for particular issues and circumstances that come about, when they come about. And then you choose the right people for those circumstances to get the type of input and perspective that we need. And so, with, with that being said, then, then I believe a, a stakeholder group would be good for Parks and Rec.
If I may, just a little bit more. The stakeholders groups are ad hoc. No stakeholder group that I've ever worked with in 21 years has been a standing committee or a standing board. So for example, when, when council said to administration years ago, we need to do something to protect the owls. We want a local ordinance. We created a stakeholders group that involved members of Friends of Wildlife, the construction industry, builders. So there was, there was somebody from CCCIA, there were specific contractors that did scraping and grubbing. There was members of CC, you know, Friends of Wildlife. We had people from the regulatory body, the Fish and Wildlife. And we started to begin the template of an ordinance. And then eventually that ordinance was brought to council. We didn't create a council-appointed board or committee. It was administration putting together a stakeholders group at the direction of council, saying we wanna go in this direction. Well, with something that is that broad, you know, we didn't wanna do it independently. So just some, you know, food for thought as, you know, as you move forward with, so a Parks and Rec Advisory Board, if there's not an item before the council or an item before us, that there won't be a standing committee of Parks and, you know, a stakeholder group.
I, I totally understand.
Okay.
We used to call them President's Advisory Groups, PAGs. And if it was a situation-specific issue, you get the right people around it to give the input and to build, in this case, the ordinance. So, Parks and Rec, I would, I would go stakeholder group.
Sunset.
Stakeholder.
Keep as is or stakeholder, definitely not sunset.
I can go stakeholder.
Stakeholder.
Okay. And the last one we have, Waterway Advisory Board, I can't remember who is.
Me.
Oh, you get that luxury?
Stakeholder group.
Alright. Your recommend?
Well, yeah, the, the, certainly, we've got 400 miles of canals, saltwater, you know, freshwater. So we have a canal system. There's, there's not a lot of daily, monthly decisions that get made around our waterways. And so, when there are certain things that arise that we would, you know, want to affect in some way, then I think you build a stakeholder group at that point to deal with, hey, we're thinking about building another canal someplace. Hey, we're thinking about building a north access to the North Spreader. So you put a group together at that point and say, let's, you know, here's something that we're considering. So I, I, there's, I don't think there's a need, even, you know, every other month, the way they meet, I don't, I don't think that there's necessarily a reason for them to meet every other month. We don't have these new waterway issues come up that frequently. And like has been said before, any citizen, by email, by phone, by public comment at the podium, they can bring an issue that they are seeing, but there's no way seven or eight people are gonna go out and peruse 400 miles of canals so they can come back every other month and say, hey, we got a problem with this canal or that canal, or whatever. So, I would recommend a stakeholder group when we have issues that affect our waterways.
Councilmember Law?
Yeah, for me, having sat on the board for a little over a year, that's what sort of skewed my perception on how, the effectiveness of these boards. We spent countless hours, and some of those meetings were in excess of four hours. And I think that's how we got in, in the situation where we're in with regards to the Waterway Advisory Board is, not to discredit it, but the, the argument that was brought forth by Councilmember Stanky is, oh, we have all these waterways, it would be foolish not to have a board. But the waterways don't work in the way that we think they do, in, in the sense of necessitating a board to oversee them. I felt on numerous occasions that they were meeting way more often than they would. They were looking for things to talk about, looking for things to discuss. They were at some point bringing forth staff, just for the sake of bringing them forth, to put on presentations that weren't pertinent to what they were doing. So yeah, at the very least, I would agree to sunset it, at the very least, a stakeholder. But when we start talking about these stakeholders, it's counterintuitive to what I keep saying with regards to staff putting forth efforts. I don't know when and where they would be activated, how staff would know when they should be activated or not. It creates more problems and more resources that I don't think, that need to be directed towards this particular group. So I would, I would actually vote to sunset it.
Councilmember Cosden, since I see no other lights on, you wanna start the process again? So I think we had sunset, we have stakeholders or continuas.
Stakeholders or continuas.
Stakeholder.
Sunset.
I could go either way with sunset or stakeholders.
I would lean towards sunset, but would be agreeable to stakeholder.
Sunset.
Sunset.
Alright, it sounds like a majority of sunset then. One, two, three, four, five. Alright.
Just to clarify, these committees that were established by ordinance and may meet before we vote, they continue on as before, as they are now, because we have to vote on this. This consensus today is not validation that they're being eliminated. So, we need to make that clear, that in the month or so before we vote, that those committees continue to meet.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, I know our fire chief has been eagerly awaiting, is the Fire Department Accreditation Update.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I know I'm between you and lunch, so I will talk quickly, and if you have questions, just let me know. All right, so Fire Department Accreditation Process, we are actively in this process, and there's a few things. The standard of cover, Community Risk Assessment, that was backup material, want to make sure that is information that you have to understand. And I'll go through some of that process today. So first off, why is accreditation important? So if you think about if you're going to send your child or grandchild to a school, you'd want it to be an accredited school. Why, right? You want to make sure that they're up on the, the latest ways of, of education, that it correlates to whatever job performance, the latest in, in education standards, it's important. If you're going to take your child to a doctor, you want to make sure it's an accredited pediatrician, right? Somebody went to school back in 1960, you want to make sure that they've kept up on their continuing education, latest techniques and, and the evolution of medicine. Same thing with a hospital, right, joint commission, when you're going in for a medical procedure, you want to make sure that there are standards that that hospital's being held to for safety. And we know our police department, they have Kalia, and that keeps standards for the police department, law enforcement, and they've been very successful there, they've been accredited for, for years. So for the Fire Department, we go through the Center for Public Safety Excellence and the Commission on Fire Accreditation International. It's the parent company, is the CPSE. So, a number of the fire departments across the world that are accredited is 308. There's 24 here in the state of Florida, and two of them, so total of 26 here in Florida, but two of them are military bases for Department of Defense. You can see most of the major cities and metropolitan areas are represented hereby accredited departments. I think the major exception to that is Jacksonville is not on that list. So accreditation is more than just a sticker you put on the truck, just like a college diploma is more than just a piece of paper you put on the wall. It's about the process that you took to achieve that. And so, we're already going through the process as we've taken care of a number of the steps to get to accreditation. But we've identified a lot of areas that we need to take some action to improve. And so that's part of this process is that you look at all of these different areas and you continuously look for improvement. So it helps us align with our council's goals and with our community goals. We focus on that continuous improvement effort. We are very much focused on data-supported decisions, and we define our expectations and our vision. Recently, we got together with a group of folks from Labor and Management and folks from across the different facets of our organization. We have a new vision for the Fire Department and its exceptional service together. So certainly, if this is to relate why we exist and where we're going, we exist for this exceptional service. And we recognize that we have to do it together, whether that be as a community as a whole, working with Mayor and Council, other members of the department, Labor and Management, all of these things, we need to work together towards this goal. So the building blocks for accreditation, we have to have a strategic plan, the Community Risk Assessment Standard of Cover, and the Self-Assessment Manual. So I'll review some of those just briefly with you. So Cape Compass is council's strategic plan, we have to align with that. One of the waypoints is accreditation, but that excellence in public safety is our main goal. We worked on our strategic plan, we had internal and external stakeholders give input on it. This is something called Vision 2025, it hangs up in all of our Fire Department workplaces and has some of the specific goals. As you can imagine, our strategic plan is, is got quite a bit of detail involved in it. But these are some of the high points. For instance, we try and track the time from when we arrive on scene of a fire to putting water on the fire within five minutes. And we want to have an employee injury rate less than 10% of our, of our workforce, a variety of other things there. So if you think about, if you go in for a physical at a doctor's office, they're going to take your vital signs, right? They're going to take your blood pressure, pulse, maybe take some blood work and get into some of the detail there, what's going on with you and your health. If you think about that for a Fire Department, how do we get our physical or checkup or take our vital signs? This is our Community Risk Assessment Standard of Cover. We go through the risks and how we're responding to them. So some of our vital signs, we look at risk classification, response times, baselines and benchmarks. And we also talk a lot about performance measures and outcomes. Instead of looking at a system of inputs, we look at, oh, we have six fire inspectors, or we have 20 fire trucks. It's about outcomes, right? How many things were we able to correct in our community for fire prevention? How many fires were we able to contain within the room of origin? So all of those things make for a better outcome for our community. So we use this three-pronged access here for developing what these threats are going to be. And so, we look at probability, how often is this potential emergency going to occur? We look at a couple of years of back data on that. The consequence, is this a single-person low-life threat, or is this a mass casualty incident that's going to have potential federal impacts? And then lastly, the impact of how much does it impact our department to be able to respond to it? How many firefighters are going to be needed to take care of that issue? Based off the number that's assigned to each of these particular issues, it's plugged into this formula. And we end up with these risk matrices. So obviously, the bigger the area of the triangle, the greater the, the risk. And so we can go through, and this is just one example of, of fire, but we look at actually these six particular areas, fire, EMS, technical rescue, hazardous material, wildland, and marine rescue. And so we look at, so ERF is time that it takes to accumulate what's called an effective response force. So how many firefighters is it going to take to be able to deal with the issue at hand? We have everything from call processing times, travel times, turnout. Obviously, if you're going to bring in, on a fire, for instance, three people is going to 10 minutes or less. But if you're going to try and amass 21 firefighters, it's going to take a much longer time. So we look at all of these things, and are very data-driven in, in these baselines and benchmarks. We look at the 90th percentile, so if you think about average, average is 50th percentile, half the time you're going to do better, half the time you're going to do worse. So we look at 90th percentile, so nine out of 10 times, I can say you're going to get that service. That 10%, that's above that, we consider that an outlier, there's some type of anomaly that takes it outside that range. The last component that we're currently working on here is our Self-Assessment Manual. You see these 11 areas here, this is kind of everything soup to nuts that you can think about to run a Fire Department. There's 287 categories that we have to look at and self-go through each of those, and how are we operating within that? We have to develop a description, so it defines what we currently do, an appraisal, how is it performed? And then we have to plan on how to improve it, and we actually have to provide references on each of those things that show that we are actually doing what we say we're going to do. This is good for our community, it's good for our firefighters, and it's good for our entire organization. So just a couple of examples. So this is one that every year we have to conduct a formal program appraisal on our EMS program. That shows that we're actually making things to improve our outcomes and effectiveness towards reaching our goals. Another one here, for apparatus maintenance and repair facilities adequate in the space and equipped with appropriate tools. Now, out of that, and even when we have our peer team come, our peer team won't, can't make a recommendation that says you have to go build this, or have to go buy this, or have to go hire these people. They'll make a recommendation, you should look at improving whatever the, the area is. They can't make a recommendation to purchase or expend funds. But that's an area, if you've seen where our fire trucks are fixed, it's definite need of improvement. And then there's another one here that talks about the need for cancer screening, cardiac assessment, and even behavioral health screenings for our firefighters, making sure that their well-being is taken care of. So, as you can imagine, it's, it's a whole lot of information, those 287 things we have to look at. So the timeline, and I apologize, it's a little hard to read. We are currently on plan and, and path right now to finish our Self-Assessment Manual here at the end of July. We would hope to have our peer team assigned and onsite. So this is four people from across the country, they can't be from the state of Florida, that are going to be coming in to basically look at all of those, all of our documents, all of our things, and actually prove that we meet the standard. So they'll be here in November, and then we hope in, into February, beginning of March, that we'll be actually sitting in front of the commission, which is a board from across the country. That will, they'll go through all of our documents, and they'll quiz anybody up there if they have particular questions, to be able to get that original, our initial accreditation standard. So we've expended about $10,000 to $15,000 in pursuit of this process so far, we have about another $10,000 to $15,000. We'd estimate that it's going to cost us to get to that end line. After that, there's a cost of about $2,100 a year reoccurring that'll be associated with this. Now, there's other things that I think we're going to need to, to do, but that's just going to be based off of ways for us to run business, based off of some of the things that we continue to find in there of, of industry best practice. But directly, we've got about $10,000 to $15,000 left and about $2,100 reoccurring. Continuous improvement is, is what this thing is all about. So we continue, as we identify issues, we plan on how to improve it, we implement, execute those changes, and then review how that process has worked, and we continue to go through it. Accreditation is not a one and done, so this is our current map that we've got laid out for basically every month, every other month, there's a list of things that we have to continue to compete, complete. And so this is a way that we operate, this isn't just a one thing you get done. This is a continuous process to make sure we stay healthy as a Fire Department. And that's my presentation for you, questions?
Thank you, Chief. I know you, you've been working on this, I know we've had a discussion over the last couple of years on this, so great to see that process moving forward. Just for my colleagues to have a good understanding, I believe it's a little over 300 Fire Departments that are accredited throughout the country, is, is that my understanding?
Across the world is 308, and 24 municipal departments in Florida.
So, just to kind of put that in perspective, and when you have that accreditation, there's a criteria that you have to meet on many different levels. So I think it just moves our, our Fire Department, you know, that much closer to excellence. So thanks for all the, all the hard work. Any, any discussions for Chief Lynn? All right, thank you, Chief. All right, next item, five, is roundtable item or discussions, we don't have anything listed. Council have any roundtable discussion? Okay, seeing none, time and place of future meeting, we have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, May 17th, 2023, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, meeting adjourned.